All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
If everybody could get in their seats, we're going to start this meeting very soon. We used to be able to see the TV screen, I can't see it. Oh, I guess I'm on, hi. Welcome to the 187th regular meeting of the Greenfield Town Council here at GCTV, 303 Main Street on the third floor. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Seeing none. One thing before a roll call members, I found a phone in the bathroom with a pen.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you. Actually, mine was mine, I was looking for the pen.
There you go, thank you. And if you wish to make a public comment tonight, there is a sign up sheet right there, so it's helpful if you sign up beforehand. And right now, we're going to go, the clerk is going to call a roll.
Councillor Sun.
Here.
Councillor Lobach.
Present.
Councillor Alice.
Present.
Councillors Pytham and Dolan are absent. Councillor Gilmore.
Here.
Councillor Wheeler is absent. Councillor Mayo.
Here.
Councillor Lenovich.
Here.
Councillor Mass.
Here.
President Renaud.
Here.
Vice President Ricketts.
Here.
Councillor Stempel.
Present.
Madam President, you have a call.
Terrific. So back almost a year ago, but not quite a year ago, our town council passed an ordinance where we would invite community members to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in the spirit of creating community and standing for this very important pledge together. Tonight is our very first group that we're going to have up. And the reason why I've invited them is because in October, a gunman from Pittsburgh killed 11 worshippers at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. Since 2017, antisemitic incidents have increased over 60 percent, not 16, 60 percent. More than ever, we need to stand with our Jewish neighbors, support them, and let them know that they are not alone, and that no one in this community should ever feel alone. And with that, I'd like to introduce Jean Shardek to speak a little bit about our very own Temple Israel, and then to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here tonight to speak about Temple Israel and its importance and presence in our community. Nearly 110 years ago, a small group of Jewish families chose to establish a congregation in Greenfield. It was officially chartered in 1918, and the congregation continued to grow, meeting in various homes and halls. In 1923, they purchased the Hiberian Hall at 27 Pierce Street, seeing the town of Greenfield as a good choice for their permanent home. Their commitment to Greenfield as their congregation's home was confirmed in 1924 with the purchase of a plot of land on Log Plain Road to serve as their cemetery. Throughout the next nine decades, the Jewish people of this region affirmed their confidence in Greenfield as a proper home for their religious institution, with the building of a school, the addition of administrative wing and library, and perhaps most affirming of all, a new sanctuary. All through this time, Temple Israel congregants found a sympathetic and welcoming community here in Greenfield. Temple Israel is the only Jewish congregation in Franklin County. We have approximately 124 members, and growing, from not only Greenfield, but Ashfield, Conway, Buckland, Northampton, Colrain, just to mention a few of our towns. Our congregation is as diverse as its surroundings, and we are welcoming to Jews and non-Jews, many of whom enjoy our services throughout the year. Temple Israel is very committed to the Greenfield community. We hold a community-wide Hanukkah party and Passover Seder at Buxton Reed. We cook and serve the community meal twice a year at the Second Congregational Church. We participate in gleaning at the various farms in and around Greenfield. We bring food to the Leonard Street Shelter. Our rabbi is on the interfaith council. We offer weekly Torah study, open to members and non-members, Jews and non-Jews alike. We just held a very successful auction to help Syrian refugees. After the Pittsburgh event, we opened our sanctuary so people could come and be together in solidarity. We had over 100 people show up to share stories, concerns, and express grief. It is very troubling that we have to lock our doors during events and services to keep our members and friends safe, and we hope that Greenfield will remain a sanctuary, removed from the madness of those governed by hate and anger. The town's recent response to our security concerns by providing a reassuring police presence and the fact that our Catholic neighbors from the Blessed Sacrament Church feel quite comfortable using our classrooms for their Sunday CCD classes, they've been there now for six years, I think waiting for their school to be built, are two examples of how the larger community works with and supports our congregation. We have every confidence that Greenfield will continue to be a welcoming, friendly, and supportive environment for all of us. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight, but if Mark Smith would hand me the public comment sheet, and we can start with the public comment.
Do I wait before motions orders?
Yeah. We can do it then. Thank you. Okay, so we ask that you keep it to three minutes, and please, for the record, even if you've done this before, please state your name and your address and your town. And first up is Paul Javelin.
I am Paul Javelin, I live at 73A Fairview Street here in Greenfield. If I could be so bold, I would like to attempt to frame the council's deliberations that will take place over the next few weeks about funding for our new library building. This is a once-in-a-lifetime decision that will affect generations to come. As I travel around our county and walk across bridges and visit magnificent buildings built in the 19th and 20th century, I always look for the plaque to see who had the insight to construct these, foreseeing how they would influence future generations. Liked and to those marvels, these deliberations are not about a building, but rather about access to services needed by future generations of our children, teens, and adults. When I was first asked to be a member of the Board of the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library, I accepted, hoping to help raise funds for library events and services, and maybe even start an electronic newsletter. But over the past two years, I've been inspired by the impact that you and I can have on future generations by working together to fund this new building. A building that can supply new and extraordinary services to everyone, and access to those with limited mobility, including a large percentage of our elderly. Let's not settle for some poor imitation of what we can offer our current and future citizens by spending virtually the same amount of money to fix up what we currently have. Rather, let's work together to be sure we find a way to use the state grant money to build a structure that decades from now will have provided thousands and thousands of Franklin County residents with the core services to improve their lives and their community. From the Siena College survey conducted of Greenfield residents, you and I know that 75% want this new library, and 68% are even willing to pay more taxes if necessary, even though that's unlikely. I have personally spoken to hundreds of folks who are passionate about getting this new building constructed. Your constituents have spoken, and they want each of you to figure out a way to work with the Library Building Committee to use the state grant to build our legacy for the future. I hope that they put each of your names on a plaque in this new library, so that our future generations can see who had the foresight to make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne Wade Gardner.
I have a couple of things on my mind, it won't take long. I missed a good chunk of the Ways and Means Committee, so I'm not sure what you decided, but I wanted...
Roxanne, could you state your address for the record?
Oh, right. 85 Hastings, Greenfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that I made my voice heard on funding the food inspections, putting money back into the budget for food inspections and for building inspections. To defund either one of those seems to me, to be frankly irresponsible, so I'm hoping that tonight you do the right thing and fund them. Second, the library. I don't have a green t-shirt, but I do have a button, and I'm wearing green, and I want to strongly encourage all of you to find a way to vote to fund the library. I'm sure there'll be people here this evening that speak more eloquently than me on the issue, but it simply makes good sense. We have an opportunity to have half of it already paid for, there will be additional fundraising, and it's a good possibility that we can do this without overburdening the taxpayers, so I'm simply asking you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Larrabee.
Hi, Mom. Hello, so city councillors. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you from the bottom of my heart...
Excuse me, Karen, could you please state your...
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Karen Larrabee, 24 Oak Hill Acres in Greenfield. And I'd like to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service and dedication to the city of Greenfield. I love Greenfield, and I appreciate the time and energy you spend serving on this council. I was born and brought up in Greenfield, attended Greenfield schools, and graduated from Greenfield High School. I'm a business owner in Greenfield, the president of the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library, and I'm thrilled to be a taxpayer that supported a new high school and a new senior center. Now it's time for a new library. Our library is a happening place that serves people of all ages, and I'm here asking you to support a new library for the city of Greenfield. A lot of hard work's gone into securing a $9.4 million grant from the state of Massachusetts. Now it's time for the council to make a new library in Greenfield a reality. The current facility is inadequate, the space is too small, and it's inaccessible to those with mobility issues and people with children in strollers, and the parking is a nightmare. All of this and more has been addressed with the grant application that was submitted and subsequently granted. We have a phenomenal library director and staff that's been making do with the space for years, trying to make it welcoming and inviting, but Band-Aids no longer work for this facility. I'm here asking all the councillors, especially my precinct councillor Sun, and my at-large councillors Renaud, Mass, Ricketts, and Stempel, to vote yes for a new library for the city of Greenfield. Thanks.
Thank you. Susan Worgaftik.
My name is Susan Worgaftik, I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I'd like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. I want to make an initial statement that I strongly support both the development of a new library and a state-of-the-art fire station for the town of Greenfield. For the last five years, I have chaired a group of citizens, excuse me, that have worked with the mayor to develop a new skate park for Greenfield. The site that has always been on the table has been the Beacon Street side of the Riddell Beacon Street site. It has been the only site that we have been allowed to consider. We recently learned that the only site that is being considered for the fire station is the Riddell Beacon Street site. At this time, there is no plan to arrange for the fire station to share the property with the park. This might be possible depending on the assumptions that are made within feasibility report, but at this time, I'm sorry, I'm very angry, we have no understanding that a sharing of the property with the fire station is even a consideration. We have been unable to move toward, forward on the skate park because the Riddell Beacon property is contaminated and requires remediation to be used. The state funding that we wish to get for the skate park development will only deal with shovel-ready projects and cannot be used unless we deal with the contamination. Until the town received funding for remediation, we were stuck. This past summer, we learned that the town had received the remediation funding that we were hoping for. We expected that remediation would take place in spring 2019, we would apply for state funding for the state skate park in the fall of 2019. Our goal has been to have a skate park up and running by the end of 2020 or early 2021. We have raised more than $23,000 to assist the town with the match that the Commonwealth requires, and have talked with the foundation about ways that we might work with them to pay for some of the street furniture that would be necessary for the site. We were planning a community meeting this spring to talk about the final design for the skate park. We thought we were ready to go. Because the feasibility plan for the Beacon property does not now include a skate park, it is likely that we will have to once again look for a new property for the skate park. We have been in contact with Jean Wall, the Planning and Construction Committee, and believe that the committee is working in good faith within the constraints required by the demands of the state-of-the-art fire station. We expect to work with them as the process unfolds. To have this taken away from us is, to say the least, disappointing. It has been more than 10 years since the previous skate park was dismantled, and now looks, I don't have much more. It now looks like we are going to be starting, if not from square one, certainly lower in our planning process than we originally thought. We do, however, hope to keep to our planned timeline. We will, and this will mean that we will be coming to the council for the matching funding that we will need for our state grant application this spring. We will be more specific about our needs once we know what they are. The matching funding will be part of the Recreation Department capital request for fiscal 2020, and we want to give you that heads up now because we hope that money will be part of the process. We wanted to inform the council of the situation. Until this weekend, we had no idea that there was any difficulty in going ahead with our original plan. Communication with us about the development of the Riddell Beacon property has been extremely poor. We do, however, want to pull together with others to move forward with the town on all fronts, and we do, however, offer this as a cautionary tale for those community groups that are working on long-term projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for the extra time.
Of course. Joanna Whitney.
I encourage you all, as you are deciding whether or not to support a new library, to try to consider the current building from every perspective. You may already have your own experience as a library patron. I encourage you all, everyone on the town council, and everyone who is following the issue, to try to see the issue as best you can from the perspective of someone with mobility challenges. I encourage you all to visit the library regularly over the next few weeks, but I encourage you to limit yourself to only use the routes that are handicap accessible. As you do that, I ask you to think about the message that route sends to community members like me, who are limited to this route always, not just on occasion. Equally important, in my opinion, I ask you to consider what kind of message is sent to people who are able-bodied about who and who is not a part of their normal, everyday world. What message is sent to residents who, through whatever cause, are just beginning to learn how to live with newly acquired disability? Will they still feel welcome in Greenfield and valued? I would like to suggest that these separate entrances have significant impact on our community. They divide the public experience based on who can and who can never use the front door. In fact, I cannot get closer than, to the front door than the sidewalk on Main Street. I can tell you, it is extremely difficult to feel a part of this community, no matter how much I try to contribute, when my presence is routinely challenged or regulated to a shabby-back entrance. As this discussion moves forward, I encourage you to make the best decision you can about what kind of community Greenfield is, and what it will become in future years. I hope you will spend time really educating yourself on the consequences of that decision. I hope you will invest in a future that allows everyone, able-bodied or not, to feel valued and welcomed in our community and in our public spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Bob Williford.
I am Bob Williford, 97 Homestead Avenue here in Greenfield. As you councillors work toward approving a new library building for Greenfield, I've brought you a couple of gifts to help you focus. You're getting a worn yellow pencil that says Greenfield Public Library. Like the library building itself, it has seen better days. The eraser's almost gone, so it's kind of limited in what it can do. Don't make any mistakes. It even admits that it's number two on the back. It's the same sort of pencil that you might have been able to borrow at the desk in 1908, after the town took the building with the intention of building a public library on the site. Public libraries were simpler then, and in the end, the town just tacked an addition on the back of the 110-year-old house, a book warehouse, really. Books and a stubby pencil, what more would you need? A lot more today, after another 110 years. Today, if you borrow a pencil at the library desk, it looks a lot like a 1908 pencil, but the staff will ask if you might also like to borrow the latest bestseller, a biography and audiobook, access to authoritative databases, online magazines, to use a computer or printer, how-to books, music or video on disk, or to download or stream to your device, a lecture or literacy program for your kids or grandkids, maybe a ukulele, not your father's library. Pencils still work, even stubby ones, but the 18th-century houses just can't accommodate a 21st-century library. Greenfield has excellent library service, thanks to great staff, enthusiastic volunteers, and a friends group that funds the library's programs. But that's in spite of the limitations of the building. They have to work twice as hard to serve us. What we need to make it easier to provide and expand that service, and for us to use the library, is a new building that's accessible to all citizens with parking, rooms for programs and meetings, space for teens and beginning readers, as well as energy efficiency, community space, and modern and accessible restrooms on all floors. Keep the pencil on your desk to remind you of what we're working with now. The other gift is a toolbox pen. If you open the box, it's like a library, it's a multitasker, it's a ruler, it's a level, it's a stylus to poke those little buttons and touchscreens on your 21st-century devices, the screwdriver's under the cap, oh, and it's also a pen. Just a reminder of building possibilities. As an aside, it's a $2 pen. It's not a Mont Blanc. If there were grants for ballpoint pens, the way there are $9.38 million grants for libraries, the pen would have cost me a dollar. We're not asking for the new library to be gold-plated either, but we need a purpose-built, flexible, accessible, modern space. Please vote yes for a 21st-century building for Greenfield's public library. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Roth.
My name is Richard Roth, I live at 319 Log Plain Road East in Greenfield. I've got some major concerns at the top of my list, which is separate from the library and other issues that have been presented already. My concerns are with GSET, with this internet that started a few years ago. First downtown is a trial to see if it would even work. I've already spoken to John Lund, I didn't get the answers really to satisfy my curiosity. I still don't have certain answers, and from the questions I asked, my impression is that the town of Greenfield owns GSET. The trucks run by, the truck, the truck, if that's one line truck that we have, is owned by Greenfield. John Lund works for GSET, his check comes from Greenfield. I was in the telecom business for over three decades. My concerns are, A, as a town, we're now a city, and I don't know why we're still calling ourselves a town, other than definition of town. Why is the city of Greenfield in a business? This is technically a business. We have municipal requirements. I feel that certain requirements have not been met, and some of this stuff, and I have a list of it, is, it has to still do with GSET. The town, my understanding is, now has all LED lights, we own all the fixtures. Now, from my background in the communications field, those fixtures are in... Now, from my background in the communications field, those fixtures are in an electrical space, and I did speak to John Lund about it. On top of those fixtures being in an electrical space, which is reserved by the power company, and these poles are owned by the power company, and at this point Verizon. So what we've been doing, or the town's been doing with GSET, is hanging these nodes, they're all over the place, I think they're god-awful ugly. We're going the wrong direction. We're hanging things in the air that should not even be visible. I live on 319 Log Plain Road. It's the north end of Greenfield. They've been hanging these nodes, these little white boxes that are, there's like three sometimes to a light. Even my street, there were nodes already hung, there were nodes all over the north end of Greenfield, and then about, I'm going to say about a month ago, I noticed a lineman or from GSET taking them down. And when I looked out my window, I'm thinking, gee, we're getting close to this thing in the north end. As observing this technician, he's removing these nodes, and I went out and I talked to him, and when I asked why are these nodes being removed, the answer was, there's no service to feed them. It's like the cart before the horse. If I can indulge just for another moment. When I spoke to John Lund, the problem is that we have no fiber run to that north end of Greenfield, and I was assured that fiber will be eventually run, and that these nodes are now being taken down to put into locations that have fiber in it in place, because you need fiber to serve these nodes. So part of my concerns are that, A, we've spent money to do work, it's like the cart before the horse. We don't have the fiber up there. Fiber's very expensive. I was in the fiber field for over 10 years. Fiber is very expensive. So my concerns are, A, that we're in a business. We're a town or a city. Why are we running a business? Yes, we're competing with Comcast. Yes, we're providing a service that people maybe can now afford, but we're still running a business.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm sorry, we have to wrap it up now.
All right, I'll wrap it up.
But thank you.
My concern, can I just have a few seconds?
Um, I can give you 30 more seconds.
How many people are on the list, may I ask? Because I've noticed, I've been timing, some people have been going over to three minutes. I've run into this before.
You can send us an email, too, with all of your concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terry Plotkin.
Hi, my name's Terry Plotkin. I live in Precinct 5 on Traverse Court. My name's Terry Plotkin. I live on Traverse Court. I'm in Precinct 5. I'm wearing my greens because I want to support the library. I'm actually here for two purposes, and I think they're related. I think the town will succeed, and I appreciate that you're all here helping the town succeed, whether you agree with my points or not. I appreciate the work. But I think the town will succeed if we invest in the town, not spend money like on things that maybe are just, you know, for day-to-day operations. But when you invest in your town, then we'll succeed, and we'll be, into the future, we'll be a vibrant community. And if we don't invest in our town, it will look shabby, and we'll be rundown, and going forward, we will be a less vibrant, less successful place. If we invest in our town, we build our community. So clearly, we have a once, probably in my lifetime, chance to build a nice library, and that, I can't think of a better investment for a town than anybody who wants to come here and say, do I want to live in this town? Look what they built. They built that high school, they built that library. People care about their town, they care about the community, they care about everybody, teens and elders and everyone. I think that's an important way forward, and the tangentially related, at least to me, is I know we're dealing with the plastic bag ordinance, and I think it's going to come up today, and I hope it does, and be reconsidered after the last vote. I think it's the same thing in my mind, which is, are we going to look forward? Are we going to try to make progress? Are we going to think about the next generation, not just for their education and their needs of the community, but also our environmental needs? And are we going to be a part of the larger community of the world that says, we also want to take care of the future and the next generation and the generation after that? So I hope that you'll support the, it's a simple thing, it matters, it's not just a statement, it's a real tangible thing to support the plastic bag ban, and if you're considering doing that, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. David Singer.
David Singer, 41 Grinnell Street, Greenfield. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I'm here in two capacities. One is, I'm an attorney, and I'm representing Mount Grace Land Trust. They're on your agenda to vote on a conservation restriction, so I'm here with one of the members of the family, Will Pratt, who's here, and if you need any questions answered, we're here to do that. The other thing, on a personal level, is I'd like to ask you if you would waive the rules of procedure and put that on the first thing on the agenda, since it's on the last, so that I can do my good work and watch the rest of the meeting from the comfort of my home. The second thing, while I have a chance to sit up here, is I want to speak about the library. I support the new library, and I want to give you my personal reasons why that's the case. Government is there for the people, to provide us with the ability to pursue a good life and be happy. Those are the words of the Declaration of Independence that are read on our common every July 4th. The free public library is a critical, important way in which government fulfills that promise. The free public library is a cornerstone of democracy, providing all of us with the same access to the world's information, allowing everyone, no matter what other constraints exist in our very imperfect society, to learn and become educated for free, thereby being given the ingredients for happiness. In essence, it is your patriotic duty to consider seriously voting yes for the new library, and you should all consider yourselves privileged to be able to vote on such an important undertaking. And on a practical level, the current library is over 100 years old and is no longer able to fulfill its function for all of its citizens. We, the people of Greenfield, now have the opportunity, in the form of state funding, local donations, and town spending, to raise ourselves up as a community and together be proud that as this generation is being given the chance to build a library that will last for the next 100 years. I know I feel proud to be able to participate and contribute to this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Amio.
Good evening. Louise Amio, 56 Madison Circle. First, I want to thank you all for being here Thanksgiving week. It's a tough week. I'm here for the library. I think, as everyone has said so much more eloquently than I, the library serves everyone, rich and poor alike, and I think that a community owes this to its people. Our library has done yeoman's duty with the limited facilities that they have, but it's time that we step up and meet the needs of everyone, including those who are mobility-impaired. Not surprisingly, I'm also here to speak in favor of the plastic bag ban. I would like to recommend that it be reviewed and that the ban be reconsidered, and that the ban as written include a fee for paper bags, because I believe that if there is no fee imposed, that our local businesses will suffer greatly from that. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Harold?
I'm sorry, I may have signed up on the wrong sheet. I'm here for the classification.
Okay. And Kim? Yeah, okay, sure, yeah. Well, when that time comes, we'll call the assessors department up. Peg Hall?
Hi, Peg Hall, 34 Pierce Street, Greenfield. I also support the library, but I am here primarily to urge you to reconsider the motion and bring the plastic bag ban back for discussion, in fact, to send it back to A&amp;O for whatever revisions might be appropriate. It's important to me that when I work on legislation, that we realize that what we're doing is setting public policy, and our primary goal is not just to ban plastic bags. Our primary goals are waste reduction and saving the environment, and that the plastic bag ban is a means to that. But when we look at the actual language of an ordinance, we want to make sure that it achieves the goals that we are setting out to achieve. So when I work on legislation, I always try to look for unintended consequences, which sort of by definition, you can't always anticipate, but I specifically look at drivers. What's going to make our intended action happen, or what's not going to make it happen? So in order to get fewer plastic bags, we can ban the bags, but in order to have waste reduction and to work on saving our planet, we also need to put the fee on paper bags so that we are not just substituting another item for the plastic bags, because the paper bags, although they are compostable, although they are recyclable, and although we don't find them floating around in our trees, they nevertheless are much heavier, more expensive, and the transportation costs of transporting paper bags in similar quantities to the plastic bags currently in use uses as much oil in the gasoline to transport those bags as what we're trying to save by not using the plastic bags. So I would urge that we have the motion to reconsider, that we send it back to A&amp;O, and that we work to make sure that all stakeholders' needs are taken into consideration, whether they be small businesses, or the consumers, or the taxpayers, or the large businesses, that everyone has to be content with the total package, but that we're trying to get the externalities blended back into the cost of what the product is actually doing to our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel. Cronin Townsend.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rachel Cronin Townsend, 51 Madison Circle. I was here for one reason, which is the library, but I heard about the skate park, so I'm here for two, in fact. The first thing I want to say is that I am a teacher here. I teach here at the middle school, and I've been teaching in Greenfield since the last millennium. And I love it, and I'm good at it, and my students learn, and they think critically, and they need a library. I love libraries. I would not be a teacher here in Greenfield if my town had not had a public library. That's another story. It will take way more than three minutes, but it is the truth, and they are so necessary. And I don't really need to say more than that, because many people have said many other things. And the one thing I want to say about the skate park is that I've had students in my class, in their spare time, working on making a video, trying to convince you that they need a skate park. Please don't make all that work and effort go to waste. Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for the public comment portion of everybody who has signed up, and right now, we're going to open the public hearing and second reading, but first, I'm going to ask Councillor Stempel to read the public hearing. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM at GCTV 15, 393 Main Street, 3rd floor to receive public input on the following. The sum of $12,000 be transferred to Assessor Full-Time Wa, the sum of $12,000 be transferred from Assessor Full-Time Wages to Assessor Property Assessment Services and the FY19 Operating Budget. The sum of $63,832 be transferred from 2601, the FEMA Reimbursement Fund to offset a deficit in bonded debt paydowns, and the FY19 Operating Budget. The sum of $121,168 be transferred from 16 to 7, bond premiums to offset a deficit in bonded debt paydowns and FY19 Operating Budget. The sum of $72,800 be transferred from General Stabilization for Food Inspection Services and to increase a local building inspected from part-time to full-time in FY19 Operating Budget. 511 Food Inspection Services, $50,000. 241 Building Department, $22,800. Total, $72,800. The sum of $439,850 be transferred from the following accounts to offset a deficit in the temporary interest account in the FY19 Operating Budget. 8400 General Stabilization, $364,850. 197 Central Services, $20,000. 19, oop, 491 Cemeteries, $10,000. 543 Veterans Benefits, $25,000. 913 Unemployment, $20,000. Total, $439,850. The Town Council will consider this same on Wednesday, November 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM at GCTV 15, 393 Main Street, 3rd floor. Materials can be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President. And I'm going to open up what happened. Jesus.
We have to suspend. We don't need to.
We've moved to suspend.
Please, for this meeting. I think...
We're going to suspend the meeting right now?
Yes.
Welcome back. The Town Council meeting's going to begin again, if everybody could get into their seats. Thank you all. I just want to say that the reason why we had to take a break is that one of our community members who's differently abled had an incident leaving the building. This is the second time in the time that I've been on the Town Council that this has happened in this building, and we are going to do everything we can to make sure that another Town Council meeting does not happen in this building, as long as it's not fully accessible and safe for people. We do not want to have meetings here. It's not the fault of GCTV, but we have other buildings, and we're going to do everything we can. This meeting happened on Tuesday instead of a Wednesday, so we were left without options, so for that, I apologize. And yes, Councillor Mas?
Point of order, Madam President. Can we, would you entertain a motion to suspend the rules of procedure at this time in order to take up item number 12 before communications? And if so, so mode.
We were just waiting for it to finish.
Okay. Do you want to do a second? Yep. We'll do it right in a second. All in favor, suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, so we're going to suspend the rules when we get down to the bottom, not the bottom, when we get to the motions, orders, and resolutions, but right now, just to reset where we are, I'm going to open up the public hearing again and have Councillor Stempel reread the public hearing.
Actually, we need to change. We are putting John Lund in for, yes, President.
Okay, sure, yeah. So there's going to be some changes tonight. They're not big changes. So I'm, we are opening up the public hearing at 8:20 PM, and please, Councillor Stempel, reread it again, and then anybody who wishes to speak on these items alone can come up and speak on these items, and I will leave the public hearing open for some time. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM at GCTV 15, 393 Main Street, 3rd floor to receive public input... to receive public input on the following. The sum of $12,000 be transferred to assessor farm...from, excuse me, assessor full-time wages to assessor property assessment services in the FY '19 operating budget. The sum of $63,832 be transferred from 2601, the FEMA reimbursement fund, to offset a deficit in bonded debt pay downs in the FY '19 operating budget. The sum of $121,168 be transferred from 16 to 7, bond premiums, to offset a deficit in bonded debt pay downs in the FY '19 operating budget. The sum of $72,800 be transferred from general stabilization for food inspection services and to increase a local building inspector from part-time to full-time in the FY '19 operating budget. 511 food inspection services, $50,000. 241 building department, $22,800. Total, $72,800. The sum of $439,850 be transferred from the following accounts to offset a deficit in the temporary interest account in the FY '19 operating budget. 8400 general stabilization, $364,850. 197 central services, $20,000. 491 cemeteries, $10,000. 543 veterans benefits, $25,000. 913 unemployment, $20,000. Total's $439,850. The Town Council will consider the same on Wednesday, November 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM at GCTV 15, 393 Main Street, 3rd floor. Materials can be obtained from the Clerk's...Town Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:30...5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM at GCTV 15, 393 Main Street, 3rd floor, to receive public input on the following. To adopt a residential factor in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1A, which shall be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of a local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. The assessors shall provide all information data relevant to making such determination and fiscal efforts effects of the available alternatives. The hearing is required under Section 56 of Chapter 40, Mass General Laws. The Town Council will consider the same on Tuesday, November 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM at GCTV 15, 393 Main Street, 3rd floor. Materials can be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President.
Thank you. So the public hearing remains open. And right now, we're going to hear from Communications from...it's been requested that GSET Board of Commissioner and GSET Director go first. So come on up.
This month, GSET should reach over 750 households, and that means about 1,600 customers in the town of Greenfield. We should add another 40 or so by the end of the month, new subscriptions, and it will mark the 14th straight month that we have grown our billings and our customer base. We have been pretty active. In the downtown core area, we have added coverage extensively into Chapman, Abbott, Woodley, Beach, Garfield, Walnut, Pond Street, the entire Washburn Avenue area, the entire Wildwood Avenue area, and the Maple Street area, including North and Union Streets. We're working now more on the west side of town. The great majority of the eastern side of the main core of Greenfield, east of Federal Street, is pretty well covered now. I encourage people to go to gset.net and look at their coverage map, because there are a lot of you that are covered now that weren't a few weeks ago. We will continue to fill out in the downtown area for the next couple of months, and at that point, we will be looking to move north in essentially both north and south, rather than east and west, move down into the Deerfield Street area and hop across to the Green River School area, Meridian Avenue, places like that, and head north out along Berniston Road. And we're assessing whether to go through Berniston or Country Club Road first. So we are, as we go, making sure that we're using our resources wisely. Where the budget we inherited for this year was about $1.7 million, we're going to spend less than half of that. And at this point, we're on track to more than triple the sales of last year. So the other big news for us is that we did sign a contract to bring TV services to Greenfield. That will happen in the early spring of 2019. We're doing the work on marketing and pricing and putting our packages together. We anticipate being able to save people about 30% over their current bills. There's a sign outside of GSET that says that GSET customers save over $220,000 a year. That's based on an average. The average for this area for internet service with a modem is $72. Our average is 47, so it's pretty simple math. And we anticipate that people who do take a TV and internet bundle from us will save somewhere in between $650 to $1,000 a year. So we're expanding coverage, and we are adding more services for people, and we're really on track to be beyond the core of Greenfield in the spring of this year.
Questions, Councilor Mas.
Director, can you tell us if you're in physical possession of the fiber necessary to complete the build-out?
We are in possession of the fiber necessary to complete the great majority of it. For example, do I know if we have enough to go all the way up to Smeed Hill Road? I'm not sure, but we have...we'll cover about 74% of the households in Greenfield when we finish the core areas, and we have enough fiber to head up to sort of Barton Road, Long Play Road area. We have quite a bit of fiber that had been purchased previously that we are using. We are...Mr. Roth is quite correct. We're taking radios down where there are no fiber, because we're working to reuse items. We're actually...we have installations that require...it's about $3,000 less than the initial configuration. So our goal is to reuse everything we possibly can, because that was money that was sunk into liquid assets, and when that happens, you have to be able to use that and turn that into revenue-producing items. So our plan is to make sure that we use everything we have, because we understand that we're working on a budget, and that we have to get to the places where we need to go with resources that we have now and the revenues that we have coming in.
I heard you're $1.7 million below what was budgeted for you this year, so is that...is it fair to say that you will not be coming to Town...the Town Council for supplemental appropriation in this current fiscal year?
So that's quite right. The initial budget that the previous administration had for this year was $1.7 million. We will spend less than half of that. I do not, at this point, anticipate coming back for an additional appropriation.
Thank you.
Councilor Alice.
I missed...or you didn't say, I'm not sure. Total number of customers?
Right now, it's 750. We should end up a little bit north of that. It's about halfway through the month. We won't add as many in the back half as we normally do, because it's holidays.
And the TV...TV programming, you said that was coming online in the next couple of weeks, or?
No, that'll be in the early spring.
Early spring.
Once the contract is signed, there's a fair amount of negotiation with local channels. This won't be just a sort of a national cable service, WWLP. All the local channels will be part of it, and there's a lot of negotiation work that goes on. Takes some time.
Do you have any preliminary projections on the take rate for the TV services of what you believe will be the customer base at that point?
We do. We tend to do that over time. We, for example, in the first part of this year, added almost 400 customers in internet. We think that for the first six months, that's not an unreasonable thing. Personally, I think it'll be a little bit more, but we're trying to be conservative. That'll be a mix of people who already have internet and would add TV on top of that. There is no separate installation for TV, so it isn't as labor-intensive to get people set up.
Well, that's...that was what I was wondering, was it what you thought your take rate would be on existing customers getting the TV bundle? Because that would be incremental revenue versus...
Absolutely. Mostly, there's a cost for content to deliver the TV, but it would definitely be incremental revenue. We think it should add about anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 a month, and in the first six months, we're hoping to have about 200 to 250. Honestly, these are estimates in a startup, so can I tell you I'm 100% confident? No, but we looked at the rate of uptake that we have, and we've run some surveys in town, and we've looked at take rates in like towns. I talked to heads of other MLPs that have offered this kind of thing, and we're trying to come to a reasonably conservative estimate. And I think after a year, is it reasonable to think we could have 600, 700 people with TV in town? Yeah, I think that's very reasonable.
And the agreement obviously isn't finalized, but are you working towards an agreement that's a per-sub agreement versus a blanket payment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so we would not make any payment for content unless we actually sold and had a customer for it.
So it's definitely incremental revenue then?
Definitely.
Because you're not only outweighing partial of what you're making on the...
Yep, absolutely. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Communication from Mayor, Town Officers, and Employees. Mark Smith, I know you're the interim mayor right now?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce to the council, full council, Liz Gilman, who was our new Finance Director, and give her an opportunity to say a few things to the council.
Hi there. I know I have big shoes to fill between Lane and Elizabeth, but I'm really looking forward to working with you all and helping, you know, get...put Greenfield forward and do what's in the best interest of the city. There's some great people who also work in Town Hall, so, you know, you all do good, great work. So again, I'm looking at making a lot of progress and making a lot of new relationships with everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Interim Mayor Smith?
Come in.
We have a lot of items on the table that you could speak to, or councilors could start asking questions, and I know that they have...so I don't know if you want to start.
I'll start.
Okay. Councilor Mas.
Acting Mayor Smith.
Yes, sir.
We have been, and I've asked this question before, so it shouldn't come as a surprise, we've been without a chief assessor since the beginning of the fiscal year. That was a planned and announced retirement. We still have not seen an appointment to the Board of Assessors, and I have some concern that as people in January start bringing abatements before the board, they're entitled to a full board. When will we see an appointment come to the council for the position of chief assessor?
Well, as a follow-up to your question, Councilor Mas, you had also sent an email to the mayor's office regarding that. For the record, we have an assistant assessor who is, you know, acting on an interim basis in that role as dictating the charter regarding the mayor's ability to appoint a full-time employee of the town to serving that role. So that is our current situation regarding the assessor position.
Acting Mayor Smith, so is the administration taking the position that they don't need to send the appointment of the acting chief assessor to the council for consideration pursuant to the power of the council to approve appointments to multiple member boards, which the Board of Assessors is?
Again, I read your question, and I'm not in the position to take that position today. I'm actually having in consult with the town attorney regarding that, because your question was well-stated, and it did cause pause for me, so I knew at that point in time I needed to get further counsel on that.
Thank you. Other questions from the councilors for any of the motions that are on the table tonight? Because this is your chance.
I will have some.
Okay. Councilor Stempel, you have a question.
For you.
Oh, for me?
So we will not be able to ask questions as the motion come up, or?
I prefer to keep the rails closed during that time, just procedure-wise, but if it's absolutely needed, we could...I'd rather all the...yes, I'd rather all the questions come out now, so that when we deliberate, it's a deliberation among us. Yes, Councilor Alice?
Okay, I have quite a few questions regarding specifically the things that we're going to be voting on tonight. Is it...I don't know where to start now. We're going to be asked to vote $439,850 from five various accounts into a deficit in temporary interest. I'd like to get to the bottom of the root cause of this deficit. And with that, I guess my question is, why are we in deficit, $439,850, in a line item that should have been caught when this budget was produced? And I know you can't answer it. I don't think you can answer it, but...
No, I just...I know what perhaps, from a theoretical standpoint, could have happened. I wasn't there. I don't know what was said. I don't know any of the conversations. I just know that at one point, this all sat in short-term bands. When the budget was done, it was going to be bonded. And when the decision not to bond was made, it didn't get put back in short-term bands. And it is a debt that we have to pay. If it wasn't sitting up in bonds, it had to sit down in short term.
Councilor Mas?
That's kind of a simplistic way to look at it. Kelly can probably give you more details, but it is debt that we do have to pay.
Anyone with a treasurer?
Sure. I mean, what you said is correct. It's, you know, unfortunately, I was not in the meeting where any decision was made not to bond. That was the intention last year, was to bond on June 1st, excuse me. That money would have gone into the budget under the long-term debt line items, but because that decision to not bond was made, I believe after the budget had already been submitted, the short-term interest payments and pay downs that we would need to make because we had to roll the bands over were not included in the budget for this year. I don't know whether the rationale was to try and come back for a supplemental budget, or how that was discussed, or if it was discussed at all. I really don't know totally.
Some follow-up questions on this. When was that discovered, the issue? When was it first discovered that we were going to be short on interest payments?
Well, I mean, I knew, you know, after I was told that we weren't bonding, I guess I made the assumption that Elizabeth had made that clear to the mayor, that we would still need to budget for these numbers. Again, not being in on those conversations...
I'm just asking, what month was it?
It was probably April.
Prior to the budget being passed?
I honestly don't remember when the budget was passed last year.
Can...a couple of quick follow-ups.
Couple of follow-ups.
Are these interest payments...when are they due? And are they increment...in total, June 1st? Of what year?
2019.
2019. 2019?
Yes, so this coming June.
When will free cash, when are you estimating to have free cash certified?
I have been here two weeks, and I'm still trying to get through things, so I imagine I have a lot of cleanup to do and some final posting for last year. I also have to deal with auditors and Schedule A report. Hopefully, I would say, hopefully in February. It is, I think that's a reasonable time to try and catch up.
Thank you. So my questions.
Councilor Gilmore?
So I know that you're very new, and it might be difficult for you to answer this question, but I'm concerned because the budget that we passed very recently was not what I would consider to be ideal by anybody's estimate. So I'm worried about what's going to happen if we take them up. Like, general stabilization, I understand, is sort of savings that we use for these things. But I worry about the cemeteries, the veterans' benefits, and unemployment. I'm worried about what the impact would be if we take that money.
Lane did do the first reading on this, but central services, you know, it still has $22,000, a little tougher for them. Cemeteries, it's taking about half of what they have. Veterans' benefits, they seem to be able to manage that, they do well with that, so I'm not as worried with, about that. Unemployment, hard one to predict. So, I'm not saying that it, I think we're trying to get this with little impact. I think the original thought was to have as little impact to stabilization as possible. So that's why we're looking for any available funds to transfer.
Follow-up, I just wanted to know, if there is a negative impact on any of these, in any of these areas, is there still time to come back for supplemental budget?
Absolutely, there's time throughout the year in that, you know, if free cash is certified in February, what I would recommend is we address this, we address putting money back in stabilization to get back to where you're at. But, you know, the debt does need to be paid, and it's very hard for a treasurer not knowing how she's going to make these payments.
Councilor Ellis?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on my question. And I understand fully that the debt has to be paid. I'm trying to ascertain if this was a deliberate situation, or if this was just a misunderstanding. I, if this money had been budgeted properly in the budget, and we use the numbers in our budget book on tax rate, our tax rate would be over $13, I'm sorry, over $23,000 a thousand, would be about 23.10, which would add just shy of $70 on the average household, residential household. And with all these big projects that have been planned, been proposed and been on the radar, I worry about some of the comments that I heard from people who were in meetings with people involved with why this wasn't bonded, about not wanting to see that on this year's tax rate, because it wouldn't look good if we wanted to get projects done, i.e. the public safety complex. And that really concerns me, because I don't believe that this choice not to bond was made unilaterally by the town accountant, who's no longer with us. I really don't believe that she would have made that decision all on her own. And I think that there's, there are definitely people who know who made that decision and when that decision was made, and the fact that that decision was made with certain end games in mind. So, my biggest problem with these transfers, which most of them I will support because we have to, is that there was a clear, a clear idea of deception in making that decision. And I think that decision came from the top. And I'm pretty sure that there are people here who know that that decision did come from the top. So, I'm very, very frustrated that to make our debt picture look better, we're now going to be taking money from savings to cover that decision. And that decision would have cost $70 on our taxes. Now, even with that, the information we got, and this all leads back to the tax setting of the tax classification, which in turn sets the tax rate, once we do the classification. It's proposed that the, that the average single-family tax bill will run $65, according to the tax classification package that we received today, if I'm not mistaken. So, we have to look very seriously. We can talk about debt, and we have, we talk about debt all the time. This is, make no mistake, 300 and, well, there's over $400,000 in total, just on tonight's agenda, that we want to take out of our savings account, which is our stabilization account, which I would disagree is for this kind of thing. Stabilization is for times where we just can't make it. This was a decision, a deliberate decision that was made, and I feel like there needs to be some accountability for it, and I don't think the accountability falls in this room tonight. So, how I will vote on the general stabilization portion of this, I would have to hear some really good arguments as to why we need to take general stabilization to help our debt situation and our debt picture.
Can I say something? I understand where you're coming from, and I'm not going to say that there wasn't a mistake made or a bad decision that was made, but at this point, if we don't approve this money, we don't set our tax rate, we don't send the bills out on time, we don't send the bills out on time, that means I'm going to have to borrow again, which is going to cost us even more in interest money. You're looking at probably another $90,000 in interest that's also not in the budget that we are going to have to pay for, just to keep things moving.
I just asked a follow-up question.
Councilor Ellis?
Last year, I think, well, I know, we didn't send bills out on time last year either. Did we borrow?
Yes, we did.
We did, and how much was that borrowing?
It was $6 million in total.
And what was the, what was the payback on that? I mean...
I think the interest was about $80,000, somewhere around there.
Because it was a borrowing in anticipation of revenue?
That one we used, you know, we borrowed for like the parking garage and things like that, that I may have put off longer, because we needed the money at that point in time, because the whole argument with the split tax rate caused the bills to go out late.
Any councilor hasn't asked a question yet, before I go back to Councilor Masse? Councilor Masse?
After the $437,850 that the mayor seeking us to appropriate out of stabilization, what will be left in stabilization?
I think I have the number somewhere there? Yeah, no, I do, I do. The four, so including the debt one and the building inspector and Health Department, okay, just to make that clear. We will be in just stabilization. I know sometimes you include all the stabilizations for an overall...
Total stabilization.
Okay, no, that's fine.
That's just for general stabilization?
That's just general?
Yeah.
In total stabilization?
Total, total, it'll be $1,009,48829.
About 2.5% of our operating budget?
The bottom line of all of it? No, it's 3.9%.
3.9% of our operating budget?
Yeah.
I don't, I have a fundamental question. You said these bills aren't due until June, so why would we have to borrow from them if we don't make a decision today? Why couldn't we make a decision in March, after free cash is certified, and pay this money out of free cash without borrowing?
From what I understand from Lane, is that our budget isn't balanced.
So you don't know the answer to this question yourself?
No, I, it's that you don't know, there's no guarantee on free cash, okay? So...
When was the last time we had under $1 million in free cash?
Just last year.
And how much was that?
840, 841.
Almost double this appropriation.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do have to, like she said, we have to balance the budget in order to set the tax rate. So that's the reason why we're asking for it now, as opposed to waiting until free cash is certified. At that point, it's going to be too late.
Okay.
Councilor Ellis?
Yeah, I have, so when you say the ballot, the budget is not balanced, we're halfway through our budget. What is the difference between it being now or being in April? What's the difference as pertains to a balanced budget? Because general stabilization, if we had to go to general stabilization, we could still do that in April. So what is the difference between now and April?
If it's really a town accountant question, I'd... You know, again, I would say there's no guarantee on free cash. And then, secondly, I have to certify the appropriation amounts when I submit for the, there's, yes, sir.
No, I'll call on him. You can continue, Director.
So, you cannot have, you can't set your budget without having your obligations encompassed within the budget. I mean, known obligations. I'm not saying that you can't do a supplemental budget to do additional items.
Councilor Stumpel?
I just want to think about it differently. What's the difference, so what, so it sounds like there is discussion about waiting for free cash to clear and then spending that to pay these down before June. But what's the difference between using stabilization now, clearing the free cash, and then retransferring it later, saving us the $90,000? What are we trying to get at here? We need to move forward.
Was that a question? Okay, I get you, I get you. Okay, Councilor Masse?
When did the mayor first know that the budget was out of balance?
I was not here.
Acting Mayor Smith, do you know when the mayor first knew that the budget was out of balance?
Mark, you should probably just pull up a chair, because I think a lot of these questions are...
I had this surmise, he probably became aware of it when Lane came on board to fill on a part-time, voluntary basis.
We were just told that there was, this information was known in April.
I said I don't know if it was transferred, I don't know if the mayor was made aware of the information.
Were you aware as treasurer collector that we were out of balance in April?
I was not, like I said, I wasn't involved in any of the budget discussions.
But did you, but did you know?
No, because I didn't know what was going on. I thought Elizabeth had put something in the budget, because I don't see it until the book comes out.
Did you, as treasurer collector, did you review the budget, once it came out?
Yes, and I don't get the book until after you guys have already voted it. I don't think I had one.
You don't get the budget till after the council votes the budget? You don't see the budget submitted to the council?
I did not get a book until after that.
Can, I just say that there's no doubt it was an oversight, and there's no doubt it was a mistake.
Whose mistake was it? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm not into blaming, I really would like to just figure out how you correct it so it never happens again going forward.
Councilor...
And honestly, I'm not to be, I wasn't here.
Councilors, I want to say we have a new town accountant who's really being put on the spot right now for something that she, she just came on board, a new finance director, I'm sorry, I just gave you a new job title. And I think, I would, I would rather this conversation is, I don't want to stifle conversation, but I'm wondering if it's better to have it when the mayor is actually here, because it seems these are, these are the questions, these questions should be directed at the mayor, not our treasurer, not our acting mayor, and not our brand-new finance director, who's probably going to start looking at Indeed tomorrow. Vice President Ricketts?
Thank you for that, President Ellis. I just really want to just agree with her. Some of the questions have just been repeated. The answer is not going to change. It's like, you know, like court of order, like stop badgering the witness. She's, Kelly has answered, she has told you that she did, she does not know, that it was stuff that Elizabeth had done, and I agree that these are questions for the mayor. We're just grilling, two people with the same answer over and over again. You want to know the date? We're saying things like, we can guess who did it. You know, we know that it's somebody that's not in this room. Let's stop all of this, just, can we just move on from this right now? This is not...
Councilor, Councilor Ellis?
I have one, one final question. Was there ever a time that anyone at that table was ever in a meeting where the mayor indicated that it was his idea not to bond? Yes or no?
May I answer?
Yes, please.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Masse, because I actually wanted to provide some clarification, also to follow up to Councilor Masse's question. Obviously, I was the only one in, on this table that was actually involved in the budget process, along with our former finance director, Elizabeth, and another staff person. Obviously, we know it was a mistake. No one in this, on this, at this table actually has the authority to finally write off what the budget's going to look like that's presented to the council. Unfortunately, at what I know now about this situation, obviously from the treasurer collector, from Lane, and obviously from Liz, if I had known it then, we would not be having this conversation, but it did happen. A lot happened during that time, as we all know, and that's another reason why we're here today. Unfortunately, you all as a council will have to continue to make the decisions to rectify what had happened in the past and moving forward. All I can say of my colleagues here, they were not involved in the process. Should have been done differently. What I know now in my position, it would be done differently. But again, I'm looking at it from what I know today, so I'll take responsibility for that. But ultimately, we did not make the decision of what the budget looked like, but I just, at this point in time, and I said this earlier, and I don't want to, I don't want to drag this out, when we had this conversation earlier, we had Ways and Means regarding the inspections Department, Health and Building, and we know mistakes have been done there, too. Even in the budget process, when we had put in the budget some changes there. Should not have happened, we own it, but we're trying to rectify it today. And from this point forward, we have to improve how we work as a council, improve our communications, improve transparency. That's all I can do with my role, because my role is as director of administration, general administration, is a step up. So I'll... So I'll own if I didn't step up enough. So at this point forward, I will say to you, as I said to you last council member, I'll do everything I can to improve what we do because we need to improve. And that's all I can say on it at this point in time. But I just want to try to stay in today, to try to correct it today, obviously with your support, and then come back and figure out what we need to do moving forward. Because at this point forward, the treasurer collector and obviously the finance director have to be at the table when we do the budget. It cannot be done in isolation. And that's what I can commit to you today. And that's all I really want to say on it. And thank you for, for listening.
Thank you. And one thing I want to say also is that sometime in the summertime, there was a chairs meeting, and I cannot recall exactly who was there. But if we could, it might be helpful, the counselors at this table, to look back into the minutes of that meeting. It was probably August, I think. It was definitely before the prior finance director was terminated. And at that meeting was the conversation about the bonding and...
You can read the notes there. My recollection of that meeting is that the finance director said that she had advised that we bond, and the mayor had said he had no recollection of that conversation. But that's my recollection of that conversation. It will be in the minutes because it was taped, so I think the best answer, the best way you're gonna get down to that answer is to go back into that, those meeting minutes. Counselor Mas?
So I don't think these questions are meant as a witch hunt for anyone. I think it's important for us in exercising our checks and balances to understand how the budget process is, is done. It's troubling to me. I'm glad to hear Acting Smith, Acting Mayor Smith's comments, because it's troubling to me that the treasurer collector doesn't see the budget before the council votes on it. That is, that is just crazy to me, because we spent months and months on it, and the fact that a, that a key member of the finance team doesn't ever even see it, to pick up on something like this is a problem. We need to have checks and balances. That's what we've been calling for, for a long time. But there is a fundamental responsibility that we have as well, and the, and that is determining who overspent a budget, budget. The charter requires, it's not a choice, the charter requires personal responsibility for a department head who oversees, who overspends a budget. Obviously, if that decision wasn't made by the department head, if it was made by the mayor, my position would be that the mayor should be personally responsible. There are other line items other than stabilization where money can come from. We, this, this amount of money exceeded, exceeds the amount of money that we cut from the budget and added into the schools. We spent a long time working on that. It was a tireless, tireless process doing it. And I am not at all confident that we would add to that money to the schools if we knew that we were gonna have to cut 20% of our stabilization budget in order to effectuate that. It completely changes and makes completely meaningless all of the hard work we as a counselors, counselors do if we don't get accurate information. And it is incumbent on us to find out why and how that happened and make sure, not only that it doesn't happen again, but if there is a party who was deliberately responsible, and I'm not saying that there is, but if there is, that we hold that person accountable.
Counselor Gilmore?
So I don't disagree with Counselor Mas. I think that he brings up a lot of good points, but I think that my concern right now is instead of, you know, when we have our town employees in front of us who are here to answer specific questions that we have about what, you know, the, the kind of impact that this is gonna have on town services, I think we could save these questions for our deliberation here at the table, because these are things that we need to talk about. We need to talk about how we want to deal with these things in the future, but I think that that happens here at this table and not with the town employees.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Are there any other town employees that Acting Mayor Smith wants to call up to speak with us? I can't imagine they do want to come up.
Not at this time.
And now I'd like to call the assessors up to answer questions about the tax rate. If you could all just please introduce yourselves to, in your position.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Mu, the Assistant Assessor. Please speak into the microphone. Do you want me to say it, you guys? Okay. I'm Kim Mu, the Assistant Assessor.
Joseph Frigari, Chair of the Board of Assessors, and introducing RRG.
Harold Scheid, assessor, professional assessor under contract with the wonderful city of Greenfield to complement both the Board of Assessors and in-house staff in, in providing many services that accomplish the, the task of valuing properties and getting to the classification hearing tonight. My colleague...
Jeff Reynolds. I also work with RRG as an associate assessor professional contracted to help with the town.
First, I would just like to ask a question. Mayflower used to be the company that we contracted out with, and I'm not, I'm not sure when that contract was terminated, or could you say anything about what happened with that contract?
The contract was terminated as of June 30th, but Mayflower was told that if they were comfortable with leaving anytime, they were welcome to leave whenever, which they did. They left, it was probably the beginning of May.
Is there any, is there any reason you could give why Mayflower was asked to leave?
Point of order. Madam President, is that perhaps a question that should be brought in executive session? I, I don't know if it is or not. I'm, I'm just a little cautious of a question of that type. I, I don't know. If, I'd leave it to the answers.
It's okay. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that question. I think that was something that, that could potentially be answered by either the mayor or someone.
Okay. Thanks for trying. Other counselors? Counselor Mas?
Can you tell me, how many pieces of commercial property do we have in Greenfield?
There are 438. That's just commercial, and then there's industrial as well, and that is 67.
And how long does it take to assess a single piece of commercial property?
If I might. There are various aspects to the process of valuing properties. There is an inspection component. We want to maintain our database. We do that on a regular basis. That activity happens throughout the year as new building permits come in, and then periodically we verify the, as assessors, we verify the tax records. The valuation piece is largely a statistical process. We employ mass appraisal techniques to derive at those values. And breaking it down on a per parcel basis, hard to say.
If you, if you had to assess all of the commercial property in Greenfield, how could you get it done in six months?
Depends on what you have to start with. If you have a database in place, database containing all the information about the 400-some commercial properties in town, very easily in, in six months.
Counselor Stumpel?
I think what Counselor Mas is trying to ask is, so we allocated money for commercial properties to be reevaluated, reassessed, and that hasn't happened yet, and we want to know why.
So there are, as I pointed out, two steps in that process. Mayflower, before they left, conducted a revaluation of commercial properties, and that based on the information that resided in the database. As part of our contracting coming in, we have committed to conducting, as the Department of Revenue requires cyclical inspections, so that every property in town, including commercial properties, will be inspected once every 10 years. We have made a commitment to put commercial properties at the front end of that inspection process.
I think also on that note, in order to get the tax rate set, we sort of put that on the second, you know, second in line in order to get this done in a timely manner and make sure that the tax rate was set on time so that we could continue collecting the revenue as well.
So the council voted money specifically for the assessment of commercial property only. Was any of that money spent to, for any purpose other than the assessment of commercial property for residential, for industrial, for open space, for any other purpose?
I don't believe so, but that's probably something...
So it remains in the budget or it's been completely spent?
I believe that's something the accountant...
I, I believe it's a separate, not article, but order, and it does have money on it.
So that's available to us now?
Because it hasn't been completed.
That was...
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for the assessors? Counselor Sun?
How many years is personal property assessed? And how can you tell the value from one year to 10 years down the road?
With respect to personal property, which by definition is usually the assets, the equipment, machinery, sometimes the, the stock and trade or inventory of a business, that is reported to us annually through what in Massachusetts is called a form of list. In other states, they call it a personal property declaration. We have processed all of the forms of list, and we had a good-sized box. There must have been three, 400 forms of lists that were returned. When we, when we started this process back in roughly September, a personal property specialist on our team took up, took those applications and processed those. But that activity takes place every year.
Any other questions? Okay, see, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want us to speak specifically to the tax classification question?
No, we're okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the package, thank you. Counselor Stumpel, would you do the second reading of the public hearing, which is still open, and then it will close?
I would absolutely love to. A question for clarification, clerk. The public hearing on the residential factor is not there. Do I, should I switch over, or it only needs to be read once? Okay, thank you. Town Council, second reading November 20th, 2018. The sum of $12,000 be transferred from assessor full-time wages to assessor property assessment services in the FY '19 operating budget. The sum of $63,832 be transferred from 2601, the FEMA reimbursement fund, to offset a deficit in bonded debt paydowns in the FY '19 operating budget. The sum of $121,168 be transferred from the 1627 bond premiums to offset a deficit in the bonded debt paydowns in the FY '19 operating budget. The sum of $72,800 be transferred from general stabilization for food inspection services and increase a local building inspector from part-time to full-time in the FY '19 operating budget. 511, food inspection services, $50,000. 241, building department, $22,800. Total, $72,800. The sum of $439,850 be transferred from the following accounts to offset a deficit in the temporary interest account in the FY '19 operating budget. 8400, general stabilization, $364,850. 197, central services, $20,000. 491, cemeteries, $10,000. 543, veterans benefits, $25,000. Unemployment, $20,000. Total, $439,850.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public wanting to speak on those items? Seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing now at 9:15, and we're moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. And because we've already waived the rules of procedure, we're gonna skip down to item 12, and that's Counselor Leonovich on the conservation, conservation restriction.
The town council moved that it be ordered, the Greenfield Town Council approve a conservation restriction to Will and Shally Pratt, 80 Eden Trail, Bernison, Mass, pursuant to Section 32 of Charter 184 of the General Laws of Massachusetts on a parcel of land currently owned by Will and Shally Pratt to be transferred to Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust and partially located in the town of Greenfield, Franklin County, Massachusetts, constituting approximately nine acres as described in Exhibit A. Legal description, Exhibit B, resource area diagram, and Exhibit C, plans of the land. It was a positive unanimous recommendation.
Are there any, do counselors have any questions, comments? Vice President Ricketts?
Yeah, so I just want to say that Jamie Potter had come before us and he gave us a really in-depth, it was supposed to be just an overview, but it was pretty in-depth, so it was really good at chairs meeting, so I'm glad that it's positive unanimous.
She stopped at EDC as well, yeah, it was very informative.
Yep. So I think this is great to go. Thank you so much.
And thank you to the Prats. Counselor Sund?
I was at the meeting, and I know the property and everything, and I think it's a great, great way to protect the property and go, go forward with it.
Agreed. So seeing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Worth the wait.
Thank you. You're welcome. You, too. So back up to the motion for reconsideration. Vice President Ricketts, page 6.
Move that it be ordered that the town council reconsider is the following motion defeated by the town council on October 17, 2018. On a motion by Counsel Ricketts, second by Counsel Mayo, it was a roll call, five yes, six no. Defeated that it be ordered that the town of Greenfield Council approves the new ordinance as attached, Chapter 343, ordinance prohibiting single-use carryout bags which seeks to reduce the number of plastic and paper bags that are being burned, used, discarded, and littered, and to promote the use of reusable carryout bags by retail establishments located in the town of Greenfield and further amends the table and index and condense of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the coordinates be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the town of Greenfield.
Is there a second?
Someone require a second?
Motion's been made and seconded, so this is just to reconsider the motion. This isn't to approve the motion or just disapprove the motion, it's just to reconsider the motion that was currently defeated at the last... the motion that was currently defeated at the last Town Council meeting. So are there any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, the motion is passed. Counselor Mass?
Move to refer to committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? All right. It's going to be moved to committee. I didn't ask if anybody was against. I kind of assumed. Thank you. So it's going to be moved back to the A and O Committee and probably to come back to Town Council in December. So let's see, our next item on the agenda is Counselor Ricketts, appointments and reappointments. On page 11.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to Chapter Section 2-10, the Town Council approves the following appointments, reappointments by the mayor to the following boards and/or commissions for the express term. Gene Wall, Greenfield Housing Authority, three-year term, December 31, 2021. William Mason, redevelopment authority, three-year term, December 31, 2021. Gregary, Public, yeah, Library Board of Trustees, three-year term, December 31, 2021. Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee.
Unanimous, positive, with all three.
Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. All right. So now it's going to be Counselor Stempel, page 18.
The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Massachusetts' general laws, ordered that the sum of $12,000 be transferred from Assessor full-time wages to Assessor Property Assessment Services in the FY '19 operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee.
So many papers. So report from committee. We were split with the assessor vote to, for a positive recommendation, two abstentions. I believe we wanted, I, the abstentions wanted more information, which I think we got.
Counselor Alice.
I can explain the abstention. This is, it's, this money's within the exact same budget, so they can move it wherever they want. It's, 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 it's the same as the compensated absences vote that we took last month. It appears that this was an effort at transparency to let us know, but it came in the form of a motion, so it's in the form of a motion. But this, this money is within the same line, the same of the budget, so it doesn't matter what we vote.
It's in good faith. Counselor Mass?
Well, I certainly appreciate the transparency. I think it's incumbent to say what a bad idea this is. With all due respect to our consultants, we've had consultants for a long time, and consultants provide a very valuable service, but we have been on a long, slow, steady decline to completely privatizing our assessing department. And take, eliminating a staff member in the assessing department means when people who come in who need help, there, there's one person to give them help. And if that person is out at lunch, is on break, they won't be able to get help. And it is a real problem. It was a mistake when we got rid of Lester Reed, who was our regular full-time assessor. He did an extraordinary job for the town. It was, and it is a mistake to not be sending us a full board, a full chief assessor and putting someone in authority in that department. And it's a mistake not to give them the support staff that they need to run that department. This is not a department that should be completely privatized. And I think it's a, a bad direction whether we need to do it or not. I would recommend that we vote no, not only because if we don't need to, we certainly should be voting no, but also to send a message that we don't want the privatization of the assessing department.
Any other comments? Okay, I think this is going to be a, a roll call vote, even though it seems as though it doesn't matter what our vote is. Clerk, what do you call the roll?
Counselor Sun?
No.
Counselor Logan?
No.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Leonovich?
No.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes. Counselor Stempel.
The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Massachusetts' general laws, ordered that the sum of $63,832 be transferred from 2601, the FEMA reimbursement fund, to offset a deficit in bonded debt pay downs in the FY '19 operating budget.
Second.
Report from committee?
Um, this was a positive unanimous recommendation. We all understand that this needs to be paid. Let the discussion commence.
Counselor Alice.
So, I just have to say, and I'm going to vote for it, but I have to say, and it should be known, that this is an indication of some very serious issues with management and spending of money. This money was almost spent, uh, 10 months ago, on the parking garage. Luckily, the council didn't spend it, so we have it to be able to take care of this problem. And at some point, the money's going to run out to solve problem to problem to problem to problem, which we've been doing. And it, I'm going to vote for it, but it's, it's not the way to be doing, it's not the way to be doing finances of the town, it's not the way to continue going where we have to solve a problem after a problem after a problem that were and are completely avoidable. So that's all, that's, that, that same rationale will be for almost all of these.
Counselor Stempel.
I've served on this council for three years, and I think I've noticed, I noticed a change in the tide of the council and the management of the town in the last two years. I think it's a little facetious to tell people how to budget when the way that we've been budgeting for the last two years around budget season has been to take everything off the tree and expect the tree to still hold. You can't do that. You can't budget like that. That's when, when, you're going to find out how a town really operates when it gets squished. And right now, for the last two years, this town has been squished budgetarily, and I think now we're in a situation where, where does this nickel go, where does that dime go? And it's not fun for anybody. We're in precursor. I think we're, we're getting back there, and I don't think we can't come back from this. I think we do have a lot of great people at Town Hall working really hard to get us back to where we were before. But this isn't just Town Hall's fault. We need to stop blaming, we need to find solutions, and we need to come together and get us out of this together without blaming, looking backwards. We need to start looking forwards and finding solutions and moving on because the people of Greenfield deserve it.
Counselor Mass?
This, um, $63,832 will be combined with the next vote for $121,000 and change, and $439,850 in item number seven for a total of over $624,000. It is not nickels, it is not dimes. It is a lot of money. Counselor Alice is completely correct that this was money that many members of the council wanted to spend on a parking garage to make it more beautiful. Personally, I, I've been to the parking garage, I think it's very beautiful. I think a great job was done. It remains to be seen if that parking garage, if the receipts for that parking garage will pay for the $2.5 million portion that the town put forward for it. It remains to be seen if the GSAT will pay for the $5 million plus, almost $6 million now, that we've put into that. There's a lot, a lot of unknowns out there. We don't know what free cash is, but we also don't know what our revenue is in two very big areas where we have big debt. And if we think we're being squished on this, wait until we start looking at a fire station or public safety complex, a library, our water and sewer infrastructure, which we were told we would need 15% to 25% increases for the next six to eight years to fund. Yes, you have to look at everything, you have to take everything off the tree so that at harvest time, because if you don't, you'll have nothing to eat when, when you're hungry. And we're hungry today, and thank God, we did save that $63,000 from the parking garage. It is, this is the appropriate kind of payment for funding for that, and so I'll support it.
Any other deliberations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel.
We're on page 20.
Page 20.
Perfect. The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Mass' general laws, ordered that the sum of $121,168 be transferred from 1627 bond premiums to offset a deficit in bonded debt pay downs in the FY '19 operating budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee.
Similar reports before, a positive unanimous recommendation for this, same reasoning as before.
Counselor Alice.
So, notwithstanding everything that's been said, this is actually probably, of all of these, the most appropriate use of money. Again, notwithstanding the fact that we shouldn't have spent it to begin with.
Any other deliberations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel, page 21.
The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Mass' general laws, ordered that the sum of $72,800 be transferred from general stabilization for food inspection services and to increase a local building inspector from part-time to full-time in the FY '19 operating budget. 511, food inspection services, $50,000. 241, building department, $22,800. A total, $72,800.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee.
We did not, oh, we were split once again, two, two positive, two abstentions. I believe it was a result of wanting more information, and we did get some more information. Is it appropriate at this time to move to reduce? Is that what you? I'm sorry, I need some clarity there. I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the food inspection services from $50,000 to $20,000. We received report from the mayor's office that this $50,000 was to supplement the regional program through FERCOG, but $20,000 would be sufficient to increase a part-time or to hire a full-time food inspections person instead. So there's a lot of information that needs to be shared.
Counselor Alice.
I thought we took no action on this, but maybe, was this the one we took no action on, or was there another one that we took? There was one that we took no action, I thought it was this one.
We took no action on the next one.
On the next one?
It's a pretty interesting one.
Okay. I'm, with this particular one, I continually am getting confused. We, we did have some discussion. It was, it was brought forward from Acting Mayor Smith that they no longer wish to use the COG because the COG requires a three-year contract, and that was not what they were should be doing, they and the administration. And I, I asked the question if, if they were looking to leave the $50,000 in to spend for a full-time employee or to table the $50,000 to come back with a plan. I guess, I'm not sure where the 20 came from, so I'm not sure exactly what the executive is really looking for at this point.
Counselor Stempel.
Yeah, I think we failed to address this situation during our round of questioning before, so I think it behooves us to ask Acting Mayor Smith to the table to explain the rationale behind this motion.
Acting Mayor Smith, could you come to the table?
Yeah, as has been previously stated, we not have any interest to pursue the contract with FERCOG, which states at a contract amount of $50,000 each year for three years. As I stated in Ways and Means, with the, with our one inspector who had resigned but decided to stay on a part-time basis and reevaluating the situation, we're interested in basically hiring another inspector at a full-time basis and looking at the numbers, the amount that would be needed to be able to hire someone would be $20,000.
So $20,000 in the food inspection line as opposed to $50,000?
Correct.
Okay.
And with the difference that it would be a, an employee of the town and not a contract with FERCOG.
Okay, Counselors, I would rather than this be amended because it was read one way, and I think, I think we should instead, just in abundance of caution, for someone to make a motion to amend that $50,000 to $20,000?
Counselor Stempel to just second the motion.
It's on the table.
And it was seconded by Counselor Alice.
Okay, good then.
We're there.
So it's there, thank goodness. Okay, so I think that's it, unless anybody else has any questions for Acting Mayor Smith? No? Okay. So any questions, comments, deliberations about this new figure?
About the amendment. About the amendment.
About the amendment. Counselor Stempel.
So because the amendment is to fund a full-time and revoke our interest in the FERCOG, my only concern with that process, I'm all for having an in-house inspection services and not doing a regional program, but my only concern is are we ready to move forward right at this moment? In talking to several restaurant owners in Greenfield, their biggest wish for this whole entire process is to once again have a stable food inspections program, have a relationship with the inspector, not feel like the rug is, like, pulled out from under them. They want stability, and I think they deserve it as well. My only concern is are we going to be able to stabilize this program this quickly? Acting Mayor Smith did say that that's the intention, is to move swiftly, bring in the Board of Health, not act alone in a silo, to hire on a person who can get up and running very quickly, support our part-time Chelsea, and make sure that our restaurants and our community at large are protected and not only just protected, but really brought into the fold and respected as well.
Counselor Alice.
Oh, this is just on the amendment?
Yeah.
I'll wait.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, the amendment passes. Now we're voting on the entire motion as amended, which would bring down the food inspection line item to 20,000 from 30, and so it would reduce the overall from 72 to 42,800. Counselor Mass?
I'm troubled by this motion for a couple of reasons. First, the chairman of the Board of Health came into the Community Relations and Education Committee, met with us, indicated he did not understand why there was a need for more money in the budget when the mayor has not spent the money that is currently in the budget, specifically has not. There were, the mayor asked for three positions, including a director. We cut one position currently, there, at that time there were zero, now I understand there's still one position. That means there's money still to hire one additional person in the budget. In fact, there's money to hire someone at the director level. But my bigger problem is, this money was cut out of our operating budget, and what is being proposed now is to fund operating budget out of stabilization.
is being proposed now is to fund operating budget out of stabilization. Um, and stabilization is a one-time revenue source, it's not reoccurring, we don't have it available to us every year. We took this money and we gave it to the schools. And I, I was probably the only, the most cautious member here saying, hey, we shouldn't give more than we, we cut. But we, we did, we gave all the money to the schools. So if we take it out of stabilization, next year, it's got to come from somewhere. It's not, doesn't ma- come magically out of the sky. So where's it going to come from? The schools, where we put it. And the question, I am not willing to cut $42,000 from the school department to fund a, an additional inspector when I know there's already money in the budget for the inspector. And I, frankly, I, I know we dealt with a, um, a single building inspector, much less a building inspector and a half, which is what we budgeted, for many, many years. It may not be ideal, but neither is cutting the school budget, and we got to set priorities. And because it's not a sustainable practice to fund operating budget from stabilization outside of last-minute cuts to cherry sheet revenue that are one-time offsets, um, that we are expecting to get back next year, I can't support this.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah, I, I, I have been diving into the health budget from last month to this month to a nine-page email between Lane and myself, and all three things are telling me different, they have different numbers on all three things. Day being the sheets of paper. So, that's why I did not vote for this in committee, because I need, I need some time to digest and actually be able to figure out what, what exactly is left in the budget. Because it appears that there is money, but then it appears that maybe there isn't money, and then it appears that, you know, things continually change. So, that's why I, that's my problem with it, because I, I can't get my head wrapped around what money's actually there. Because if the money's already there, we shouldn't be putting more money in, because it's already there. Um, if in fact it is already there. But I can't ascertain that from three of the documents that I was provided. So that's why I was, uh, that's why I was, uh, I don't know whether I voted no or abstained, I believe I abstained. Um, so, that's, that's where I'm at, and I, I can't support it until I can get my head around it.
Any other comments? Counselor Stempel.
I just think we need more facts on this, you know, as far as health and building, you know, and be, um, laid out better, that, uh, the finance on it, the, um, past, uh, so we can all see where, where it went and where it's going.
Okay, I think we got, Counsel Gilmore.
Um, since there seems to be so much confusion, I'm wondering if we might want to table this so that we can get answers to those questions. I wasn't aware that there were unfilled vacancies, and I want, I want to support this because I, I want to make sure that we're investing, but I want to make sure that we're investing properly. So, um, I'm inclined to table this till next month.
The one, uh, the, um, anything we table at this meeting, it means that if we table any of these financial items, my understanding is that we can't set the tax rate. Um, but that, but we, in the past, we haven't set the tax rate right away either, so it's, you know, you can make a motion to table, that is what, that's the information, um... So that is the information from the former, uh, finance director, but again, we've set the tax rate later, um, but we know that sometimes there's consequences to that. I'm not discouraging you from putting a motion on to table, um, so. Counselor Mass.
I'm not in favor of table on this, because I think it's a bad idea and we should just kill it now, but I've always believed in fair play, and I want counselors to know the real consequences. We spend stabilization after the tax rate is set all the time. There's absolutely no reason, unless the mayor spends the money without authorization, unless he defies the council and spends money he doesn't have, in which case it should come out of his salary as the charter requires.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna need a really good explanation on the, we can't set the tax rate because we're not spending money out of stabilization, because it's, that's never, in, from my recollection, been the way that it has worked in 20 years, 19 years, sorry.
I'm gonna call the finance director up. Um-
Just a, a quick comment. So this is a little different than what I spoke about before with the debt and setting the tax rate, um, because you do have to have a balanced budget, it's required by law. However, this position isn't hired yet. And so, and it's not coming from raise and appropriate, it's coming from other funds. So, you could revisit this, I just don't, I understand, it's a very pressing need, um, in the department. So.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel?
I-
Yeah, could you stay up, please? I think, um, some of the counselors have, have questions.
I was, I, it sounds like we have discerning in, um, we don't understand the budget, what's going on in the building, um, department. So, do you have any idea how much money is left in that department's budget for FY19 as stands today?
Just building?
Health.
Or health? Okay.
Sorry, I misspoke.
Um, unencumbered, um, there's only 4,000. Now, um, there are one, 1.5 employees there, and I'm excluding the nurse, which is a separate line.
So we have a building inspector and a half, I mean, a health inspector and a half, currently?
Admin.
We have a health inspector and an admin. And there was the budget, I'm, I'm sorry. The, we budgeted, the mayor's budget to us was for three and a half, not including the nurse, right?
Not that-
Was for a director and two health inspectors and an, and an assistant.
Mayor, acting-
I need a little history here, Mark, sorry.
No, uh, in the mayor's budget, he actually stated that he was not hiring a health director, and he was making the nurse, uh, a nurse leadership position, so it was a nurse, an inspector, and an admin.
When did he say that?
Could you read that for us, Counselor Ellis?
Sorry, sorry, say again.
Could you read what it says there regarding the health?
Oh, I don't, yeah, I can read what it says. He did tell us something different, however. So the staffing is public health nurse leader, full-time health inspectors, two, full-time health clerk. So, we were supposed to have two full-time inspectors and a public health nurse and a full-time clerk. He, it says it in the book, but he told us something different, so, just to be clear.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yeah. I'm in favor of voting in the positive for these positions. We have needed them, I believe that this has come before us more than once, and I know for the last two years I have voted no on cutting the budget in these two departments, and I can see where that's got us. So I would like us to get full-time employees in these departments and just start moving forward from there.
Are there any other questions, or is this deliberation or questions still, can I-
Oh, no, I just have a deliberation.
I have a question. Okay. Any other questions for Counselor Stempel? Is your question for, um, yes?
Our fearless leaders. Um, so 4,000 left unencumbered?
Yes.
As of today, and we are less than halfway through FY19. Okay, and so, I don't, I don't know the answer to this, and I don't know if there is one, but why would my colleagues think that there might be more money in that account?
It's, it sounds like from what I'm hearing today, there's been a lot of, um, again, I didn't see the information that Counselor Ellis received from Lane, and obviously I was not at the meeting that Counselor Mass heard from the chair of, of the health department. But I guess it's consistent with what I've been saying this evening, is that there's a lot of misinformation that has been generated, and so I, it, we need to get the information that was provided for me today, and I'm giving it a good faith, is that we do not have enough money in the budget currently for the health department to hire a full-time inspector. We're currently operating with a part-time inspector who was full-time at the time, was now part-time. And so what we're trying to do, to be able to meet the demands of, of inspection services, is to hire a full-time person. Now, going back to the budget, which was, I'm going by what was stated in the budget, okay, which has caused this rippling effect. Because first of all, uh, the health director position is a union position, so you cannot outsource that without the union, uh, approval. So therefore, we could not do that nurse leadership. There's still always a desire to have a health director who is also at the same time an inspector. So what I have come today for, with a good faith belief, is that we need additional dollars to provide to be able to hire a full-time inspector.
Are these questions for-
I do have a question.
Okay. Counselor Ellis.
If I found you $15,766.60, would that be enough? In, within the budget that you could transfer for another department, would that be enough? It would be pretty close, right? Because 4,000 plus 15,766 is almost 20.
What do I mean by the fiscal year? Yes.
You could hold off hiring to make it work.
Yeah. Well, again, we're only looking at six months. From January to June 30.
Counselor Mass.
So, two questions. One, if we're only looking six months, then for next year's operating budget, you really need $40,000, correct? Which needs to come from somewhere, probably the schools. Second, second question is, if the full-time health inspector is now only working half-time, how do we only have 4,000 left that's unencumbered, even with the, even with the cut the council made? Shouldn't you have un- re-unencumbered half of her salary?
Yes. We, we had that discussion, um, in between meetings, um, and, and-
Yes.
That's my belief, is that-
Yes.
On that side, it hadn't been unencumbered.
And that's why-
And whether, you know, whether that information flowed down the-
Is this a question for-
Yeah. What was the total appropriation requested by the mayor last year for the health department? If you know. And, and what I'm looking for is the previous year, because I don't remember that line item going down, so I don't understand how the mayor eliminated a position in the budget, even if he set it there.
Chairman Adams, do you want to come up and help with this discussion?
Thank you. So, here's the budget that we had. One fiscal year, 2019 adopted was 144,166, at least according to the document I have.
What was the recommended amount? That was what was adopted, did you know what was recommended?
I do not know.
Could you say that number again?
Sure.
That's, that's the correct number, the actual appropriated amount.
And I believe there was a cut of 52,950?
That's after the cut.
To, to, yeah.
That's after the cut.
Correct.
52,000? So it was, the original request was 2,996? What was it for-
Counselor Ellis, counselors, remember to call on me before you speak, it's, this is turning into a free-for-all. Counselor Ellis.
2018 adopted was 173,614. Department request, 2019, 196,301. Mayor's proposed budget, 197,086. The adopted budget was-
144.
144, I'm sorry, 149,314. 144 was simply the salary of wages lines. So 149,314 is the total health department budget, including the expenditures.
I have a question for the chairman, um, Steve Adams. So are you, is your recommendation that we approve this funding? Because I feel like I've heard a couple different things, and, and you're the chairman of the board.
Yeah, I still haven't forgiven Dr. Doyle with that one. My recommendation is that we would approve this, um, but I understand what Counselor Mass and Counselor Ellis are saying. You spend money from stabilization, it's not there next year. Stabilization is, this is not typically what you use stabilization for. However, we are running with one 20-hour-a-week inspector, and if this, if this is the money that's, if this, the lack of these funds is causing us not to hire somebody, um, then I think we should do it. We've had, in the past week, we've had two instances where we've had to go out on, on calls, and, um, if we, we really didn't have someone, Chelsea came in and did extra work beyond the 20 hours, and, uh, if she's not there, then, then who does it? One of the, the last one that I did, that I went with her, and my, my, my thinking was, my rationale was, if Chelsea was not able to do the re-inspection, that I would go through and do the inspection myself. I'm not a qualified inspector, but I know kind of what to look for and give a provisional okay. We don't want to do that. We don't want to have provisional okays, we want to have an okay-to-go. And we certainly don't want to have a restaurant unable to serve food on a weekend. And, and, you know, we are hurting not only the consumers, we are hurting the businesses. And, and that's, that's just my two cents worth, or my, my $20,000 worth.
So everybody else, is, is the rest of this for just our own deliberation?
Can I give it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Counselor Ellis?
So, I'm not against filling what positions we need to fill. If, if this is a need, which it sounds like it is, but I need to understand what I'm doing first. I really need to understand what it is that we're doing and why it is that we're doing that. That's, I'm not going to get those answers tonight, because I, I believe that there's, uh, our new finance director is, is just that, she's new, she's working off the papers and doing her damnedest to do it. And, uh, I think, I think that there is some, um, unencumbrances that haven't taken place. I, I'm, I'm thinking based on what I see in the papers, I, that there are some unencumbrances that haven't taken place. The reason I think that is because on October 17th, just about a month ago, as of November 2nd, had our halftime inspector left, we should have unencumbered about $30,000. That's from Lane. So, yes, she's still here, but how is that $30,000 still eaten up? That's the question, that's what I don't understand. I have the stuff here, and I can forward it to you, and we can get to the council, but that's what I'm trying to understand. Unless that information was incorrect, but I don't know that. I don't know if it is or isn't incorrect. I'm taking everything at face value for what I'm getting. The other concern that I had, which didn't have anything to do with the health inspectors per se, was the health nurse, and she, or he, I don't actually even know who it is, the, the health nurse, whomever it is, is grant-funded for eight hours of the 28 hours we pay for, and I believe, I asked the question earlier, and the answer to my question, which was, does the 149,000 include the $17,000 grant? Or is the $17,000 grant over and above the money in the budget? It's- It's, the answer was that it's over and above a paid, when, when that person draws that twenty-eight hours that week, twenty comes from here and eight comes from here. And we don't even see that seventeen thousand. So that being said, I'm not sure how that figures into what may still be available in the budget, because I'm not sure if that's being taken into account in all of the things that I'm making. Furthermore, the town nurse, from my understanding, and I may need to get a better understanding of what the town nurse does, does a lot of services that are redundant services from other places in town. I.e., flu shots can be gotten at almost any corner drugstore. But we have someone, and we're paying someone to go do that. I don't understand why we would have redundancy in hiring someone to do things that are already being done and already accessible to everyone in far more locations. So that's another thing that I need to understand before I throw money at something to figure out if it's going to work. So I'm not against giving them what they need. And frankly, I can identify right here tonight, that sum of money that I asked if I, if we gave, if they came with a transfer from department to department, if that would be enough. I can identify that source, and I can tell you what it is if you really want it up. And maybe, maybe that's the way to go, and that doesn't require a council. It requires a memo to us saying, we're taking this money from here and putting it here. So I, I can't vote on it tonight, but it's not because I don't want it. It's because I don't have the first clue of what's going on within that department.
Counselor Mas?
I just want counselors here and the taxpayers at home to realize, you're being fed a whole lot of hooey. There is no way, there is no way that we had a fully-staffed Health Department with a director, two inspectors, a administrative assistant, and a public health nurse for a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And then that the mayor made the decision to cut the department head, the most expensive position in the department, and added twenty-four thousand dollars to, to his proposed budget. It doesn't make sense. He did not give, he didn't give a fifty percent raise to the rest of the employees in that department. It, it does not make mathematical sense. It doesn't make logical sense. What makes sense is what the mayor told us during the budget season, is that he wanted a fully-staffed department. We made a policy decision to cut a, a one position within that department. We left it to the mayor to decide whether that be a public health nurse or an inspector. He runs the department. We took that money, we gave it to the schools. Whatever we give to them now, whether we pull it from another department, it's coming from that other department next year. Or whether we pull it from, if we pull it from stabilization, it's coming from our schools next year, because that's where the money that we took this money from and gave it to. It is, it does not make any mathematical sense, and that's because it's not true.
Any other discussion? Counselor Stumpel?
I can't say what's true and what's not true, but the, what is true is that this department is in crisis mode, and I don't think good people like Chairman Adams would come here and say that we need to switch money up. So enough talking about what happened. I'm looking at my colleagues. How can we make a solution and make a solution tonight? What is that solution?
Well, we have a motion on the table. And maybe somebody wants to call the question.
Counselor Mas?
The answer is better management of the department by the mayor. It is, throwing money isn't always the answer. Sometimes direct supervision and, and doing the job of the executive is the answer. I, I don't doubt that the chairman of the Board of Health and all of the members of the Board of Health are doing the best they can. They're not getting good answers from the mayor. The mayor is not supporting them in making the decisions that are necessary. We all received a chart of the changes that have happened to staffing in the Board of Health over, in the Health Department over the last two years. It's up and down, up and down, half-time, three-quarter time, full-time. It's all over the place, and none of that has to do with funding. That is about management. Not every decision is our decision. Some of it lays at the office of the mayor.
Okay, is it time to vote? Counselor Stumpel?
So if we allocate, I don't know, stabilization. Say, say we allocate money from somewhere, and we find that there's money unencumbered or somewhere it shouldn't be, can we then transfer that money to somewhere else it needs to go?
Counselor Alice?
Yes, but once you take it out of stabilization, you're hard-pressed to get it back into stabilization.
Right, I understand that.
That, so it, it behooves us to have stabiliz...
Good job.
In my opinion, it behooves us to have, to have stabilization as our absolute, absolute last resort.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes, I know this is really difficult, because we do need more information. I mean, I just think about the flu shot. I know so many towns do that, and I didn't even think we were one who did, but every other town in Franklin County does do their towns give it, so I don't know if it's to help the elderly. Yes, they have it at every corner drugstore and stuff, but still, it's helping those that just can't go there, and they're not always free at those places. So I wish I did have that, more information. For me, the re, my biggest reason for wanting to fund it is that I eat out in this town, and my family eats out here. So it's very important to me to know that these places are always being looked at. We've seen what happens to a local place that kept falling through the cracks for whatever reason, and I really don't want that to ever happen again. I just feel like I need to take care of the community at large, too. So I want to make sure that this Board of Health is fully-staffed and funded, and I am sure the mayor is in front of us, and we, when we get to budget, then we can ask all these specific type questions. I mean, we do really well when we want to cut, or we want one percent cuts, and we want to cut all these things. But it'll be the time this year when we get to this, to find out exactly what the roles of each of these people are. I know that doesn't help us for tonight, but that's where my thinking is coming, is the roles of these people and what, how I would feel better knowing that these jobs are being done.
Counselor Stumpel?
I'm just curious if we can transfer where you think you can transfer, see if I agree with that. And then if we do find the money, we can transfer back to where we took it from.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll read from an email. "I'm sorry to say at this time, there will be no new Cruisers purchased in this upcoming fiscal year. The cut they made makes absolutely no sense and leaves not enough money to purchase new vehicles." That's an email from the chief to the department stating they're not going to buy a Cruiser this year, even though there was enough money to buy one. And I, in the budget, unencumbered is fifteen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents after payment of the leases that we still have. So he said he's not going to buy any new vehicles, and that money's there, we should use it. And the mayor's office could transfer that. And we wouldn't have to backfill it, because he stated he's not going to buy any Cruisers this year. So I, we gave the money for Cruisers, and they're not being bought, so we can use it.
So counselors, with that information, we'll be, we still have to vote on the motion on the floor. Counselor Gilmore?
I'm curious, because I thought that the Police Department was on a schedule where every two years or every three years, they were supposed to acquire a certain number of vehicles. And I, this, I just started thinking about it now, because you had just mentioned this email. Does anybody remember anything like that? Do we have that information? I know Chief Hague isn't here tonight to answer it for us.
Do you remember that? I don't have that. Nobody?
Yes. Yes. Yep. Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I'll say that we appropriated a total in that line of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred, ninety-two. That included the three payments that we currently already, of the vehicles we already have, because it's a three-year cycle, that included those three payments. And those were paid in the amount of forty thousand, twenty-five dollars and forty cents, which left the fifteen, seven, sixty-six, sixty, which would have been enough to buy one more, which was, what my justification was, was we buy one more, we take the two that they said were still serviceable, give them to the chief and deputy chief, we put their Cruisers in the line, because their Cruisers were the newest ones, or the newer ones. And that was, that was the idea. Instead, he sent an email out saying that there wasn't enough money to buy anything, and they weren't going to be buying anything. And there, that fif, that fifteen thousand would have been enough to buy one more, and they chose not to. So we should use the money, I think.
So a follow-up?
Mm-hmm.
So if we vote on this the way it is now, you know, with that, with that one amendment, and then they don't use the money for the Cruisers, if I remember correctly, that money is going to be turned back, is going to go into free cash, and then wouldn't it go into stabilization at that point? Or do we not have any control over what happens at that point?
We have, we have no control at that point. What happens is, if the Police Department overspends another line, they'll just eat that money up to cover that. So that money, again, can be moved around within that budget anywhere they want to. But I think it prudent, having the department head saying they're not going to spend it, that if we have a crisis, which is what we have, that we use money that is, being said is not going to be spent. It makes, it makes fiscal sense, because it won't always go back into stabilization. We actually have to vote to put stuff into stabilization. And oftentimes, when free cash is certified, we get a plethora of things that we want to spend free cash on from the executive office, and a lot of times, a lot of it gets eaten up that way.
Counselors, I want to, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I want to put out there a suggestion, that it seems as though, and including budget season, we're, we're sometimes swimming around in the dark while we have motions that we're trying to make decisions on, and we, we can't figure out where money's coming from, what the justification is, and we're on a deadline, and we're being told, you have to do this, you got to make this decision now, or else you're, you're going to be really hurting a town department. And so I think all the questions are valid, and the conversation is very useful, but I think what it lends itself to is that we should have a special town council meeting before the new budget comes out, sometime in January, to have more of a back-and-forth without motions on the floor, asking these questions about where is this money? I see a lot of this in the emails, but not everybody sees the emails. And I know that the questions go out there, I think they're good questions, and sometimes I can't even follow it, because there's so much back and forth. But I want to suggest that we do that and, and schedule like a ways and means that's, you know, or full town, a special meeting to, with the mayor here, because we need answers to these questions, and a lot of this, we're just kind of shooting in the dark, trying to figure it out. So, and we still do have a motion on the floor. Counselor Stumpel?
I, yeah, I just wanted to explore, thank you for that information. I just wanted to explore all other options in stabilization. At this time, I don't feel comfortable, it feels a little like hearsay to me, again, swimming around in the dark, and so I don't feel comfortable taking it. I thought like maybe it, it wasn't that type of a situation where we're really not sure what Chief Hague is, is or isn't doing with that. To who?
To his department, full department, through his email system.
And how did you acquire that?
Somebody gave it to me.
Fascinating. In all transparency, I just feel like, and I'll, and I'll restate transparency, I'll say that I don't feel comfortable with that, and I'll be supporting the stabilization funding.
Counselor Mas?
Fairly, Counselor Alice, the unencumbrance of the vehicle fund is in the Munis quarterly reports that any counselor can request, in fact, are supposed to be repired, reported to the entire council quarterly, but we don't seem to get them. I know that, we have a new director, I'm not putting that on her, but for the last two directors, we only got it once when we snarled our teeth. To clarify questions about how stabilization works, because I want everyone to understand this, money that is unexpended by departments in this year's budget will not come as free cash this year. It will come as free cash in the following fiscal year, and then can only be put into stabilization upon the recommendation of the mayor. That will be after our annual bond review with our, with our, with our bond raters, usually Moody's, but it's sometimes other bond raters, which is the bond rating that will likely be used to determine how much we're going to pay in interest on any kind of fire department, any kind of library, any kind of capital plan for this year, which means it'll determine how much we're, the, the less we have in stabilization, the more our interest is, and it costs us. So we have questions about, oh, it's going to cost you ninety thousand dollars in, in short-term borrowing now. Well, it's also going to cost us more in borrowing later if we rate it all from stabilization. So you pick your poison. I am, I think it's a bigger issue for item number seven than item number six. Item number six, we can revisit from stabilization or from another department. That request also has to come from the mayor for an interdepartmental transfer any time in the future, and I'm just, I look at the numbers, and I'm thoroughly convinced that there is money in that budget where it's been spent on something we weren't told about.
Counselor Gilmore?
I'd, I'd like to move that we table this, because I think that I'd like more information from Chief Hague about his intentions and...
Okay, so motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and this is a non-debatable motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, could you raise your hands, please? Could the noes raise their hand? So the motion to table fails. Vice President Ricketts?
I make a motion and call the question.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Stay? Okay, we're calling the question. Let's do a roll call vote. This needs nine to pass, and just because it's been a while, I'll restate what we're voting on. So the motion as amended is that the sum of forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars be transferred from general stabilization for food inspection services, and to increase a local building inspector from part-time to full, full-time in FY nineteen operating budget. Okay.
No.
Counselor Lobek?
No.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Lenovich?
No.
Counselor Mas?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel?
Yes. The motion fails. Counselor Stumpel? Please.
It's not a waste for the public who wants to know about the issue.
So one for the schools?
Yeah, that, that little game.
The town council, upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Mass General, I'm on thirty-one, right? Thank you. Upon recommendation of the mayor and in accordance with Mass General laws, ordered that the sum of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars be transferred from the following accounts to offset a deficit in the temporary interest account in the FY nineteen operating budget. Eight-four-zero-zero, general stabilization, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. One-nine-seven, central services, twenty thousand dollars. Four-nine-one, cemeteries, ten thousand dollars. Five-four-three, veterans benefits, twenty-five thousand dollars. Nine-one-three, unemployment, twenty thousand dollars. Total, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee.
This, we did not take action.
This, we did not take action on, and at this point in the evening, I can't remember why. I did not take notes on that, I apologize.
I don't remember either.
I was sitting there, and I don't remember. I think you needed more information.
I wasn't.
Waiting for more information.
I did, I did like a little, we needed more information, and I'm not quite sure on what. Hold on, let's think more clearly about this.
Oh, I remember what...
Can we all... Counselor Alice?
I remember what my need for information was, and it was the, it was all about, as we spoke, the balancing of the budget, and how that was, how that was necessi, not how it was necessary to balance a budget, because you need to balance a budget, but why balancing the budget had to happen tonight versus in March or April. And I still don't understand, I still don't understand the, it's never happened in nineteen years in the county council, so I'm just, I don't know why, I'm, I'm just confused, I really, I don't understand what, what the, what the reason is, and I, if, if we could, if I could try to explain to me, or try to understand it, once it is explained to me, that would be helpful.
Counselor Alice, so you're asking about the, why the, the rate, the tax rate, why this needs to be figured out before the tax rate can be...
What I'm trying to understand is, that's part of it, but the other part of it is, why is it November, or is it the twentieth? Did we make it the twenty-first yet? It's the twentieth.
A couple hours, it'll be the twenty-first.
Why is it then on November twentieth? We have to know that we have a balanced budget versus free cash could be settled and certified in February. Why is November twentieth different than April twentieth? What's the difference? We're in the same fiscal year, and the payment doesn't have to be made until June. I don't understand, I'm, I'm having a hard time comprehending it.
Do you want to ask the director?
I don't want to say it again, I think you heard me.
Okay, so... So, the debt, the debt is actually incurred, and by Mass General law, we have to have a balanced budget. And so, we don't have a balanced budget at this point in time.
So, what would happen if, if we didn't find out about this until February? I mean, it'd be November twentieth, and we wouldn't have found out about it. I guess I'm trying to understand, the, the budget's not out of balance until it closes, correct?
No, your, your budget is out of balance right now.
But it, only because we found out about it? It's been out of balance since we started it in July, right? That's what I...
Yes, yes.
Counselor Mass, you have a question?
Maybe by way of explanation. I suspect that we were out of balance when it was proposed. I expect that we were out of balance July one, when it went into effect, but we didn't have a finance director at that time, so the mayor firing the finance director prevented this work happening quickly. I suspect that the Department of Revenue, in working with our finance department, has highlighted this as an issue where we're out of balance. It is money that, because we have incurred, we do have to, we do have to pay it. I think it's unauthorized by the council, because that's not what the mayor asked for in his budget, and I think it's completely inappropriate. That said, I am, my first instinct is to, would be to table for a month till we could get the mayor here, but frankly, I got to be honest, I was at that chair's meeting, where our former, our former finance director said, "No, I told you this was an issue, and you ordered me not to, to, to bond," and I have email that shows that. We haven't seen the email, but she indicated that at that meeting, and the mayor said, "I don't have any recollection of it," and he said the most incredible thing, and that is, "I don't see any of the bonding materials until they're put on my desk to sign," meaning he's completely abdicated his responsibility over the finance department, which is incredulous to me. At the end of the day, the buck stops both with the mayor, but it also stops with us. And I don't want tax bills to go out late for a second year. I'm sorry, I know this takes nine votes to, to pass, and there may not be nine votes for this tonight. I would ask counselors to consider a compromise on this that would both allow the, allow the finance team to try to, to get tax bills set, give them some flexibility within their budget to, to take care of that, and give, send a message to the mayor about what we think. And my instinct is that we added forty thousand dollars to the mayor's budget, and I don't know that we would have added that forty thousand dollars had we known we had to come up with another six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in short-term debt. The year's half over, so half of that money may have been spent. I don't think it was spent, but it may have been spent. I'm inclined, and I'm not going to make the motion to amend unless anyone agrees with me, I'm inclined to amend this down, general stabilization by to three hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty. There's twenty thousand dollars within the finance team that I'm, in the finance budget, that I'm sure they can move within the department budget if they need to, to balance it for the purpose of DOR and setting the tax rate. And then, I think the mayor, that, that his team who's here today would, hears that we would like that to come from his office, or at least some of us would like that to come from his office or somewhere other than stabilization. I would be willing to do that and do this tonight, but it takes nine votes. If there's no accountability for the office of the mayor, I'm inclined to table, which means tax rates are, tax bills are going to go out late again. I hate to have that happen after it happened last year, but it may be what we need to do. But I, I don't want to put this all on the finance team, on, I legitimately believe that we need to take care of this issue, which is, is inappropriate, but is, is legally obligatory to us.
Counselor Gilmore?
I think that we should support this as written, not because we approve of anything that the mayor may or may not have done. I think that we need to get this taken care of, like Counselor Stempel has said, we need, we need to take care of this and move forward, and we've been pushing for more transparency. I don't necessarily know that it's brought us more transparency, but I don't want this to become a referendum on the mayor, because we're not punishing the mayor by doing this. I think we would be punishing the town.
Counselor Stempel?
Check to that. I just don't understand the rationale where, so the suggestion was to decrease this, the general stabilization account, for twenty thousand dollars, and return cost, and if we don't do that, my colleagues, then we'll cost taxpayers ninety thousand dollars when the tax bills go out late. I just don't think that's the right solution.
Counselor Sun?
Take it out of the merits, pay.
I hope he doesn't make that much weeks.
Definitely doesn't.
Eighty-three.
We ready to vote? It's going to have to be a roll call vote, are we missing, we're missing?
Point of order?
Yes.
Counselor Sun seems to be in, in agreement that a portion of this should come from the mayor's budget, so I'd move to amend by reducing item eighty-four hundred from three hundred and sixty-four eight fifty to three forty-four eight fifty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we're talking about moving three sixty-four to three forty-four, a reduction of twenty thousand dollars from the general stabilization, that's what, that's what the discussion on the floor is right now. Counselor Mass?
So, I know some of my colleagues don't agree, agree with us, I know probably half of us, or we're probably split down the middle, like we are on most issues. This is something, the council is split halfway down the middle on most issues.
We agree, you said, "Oh, we don't need..." I'm sorry, I just wanted to move on.
Some counselors do not agree with me, and those other counselors who have seconded the motion, as to whether or not the, a portion of this should come out of the mayor's budget. That said, there's a rule in state law that stabilization funds require two-thirds vote. And so, it is equally upon both sides, if we don't reach compromise. It's equally on both of us, if we, if we vote to table this, and tax rates go out late, that's on everybody. If we compromise, we can, we can get this out and done today, and we can revisit twenty thousand dollars next month. Twenty thousand dollars is not going to kill the, the bonding, the, the budget for this line item. I think we can re, I, I, I'd like us to reach compromise, I know it's hard for us to do, and no one's going to be happy with this position, and that's the essence of a good compromise.
Counselor Gilmore?
I just want to know, what's the rationale for twenty thousand dollars?
Counselor Mass, so, wait, can I go to Counselor Alice first?
I'll defer.
My rationale for twenty thousand dollars is we appropriated an additional forty thousand
dollars to the mayor's budget for this year, that I don't believe there would have been support for if we knew that we had to come up with six hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars in temporary borrowing, because either he didn't supervise the finance department, or he instructed the finance department not to bond, as he told us. I, either way, I believe it's the mayor's mistake, and I believe, and the charter requires the department head to be personally liable. Of course, he has fired the department head, so that is not possible. So, the only, the only option that we have, in my, in my opinion, is to take it out of his, his line item. I didn't do forty, because we're halfway through the year. I'm trying to be reasonable about that, although I don't think it has been expended at all.
Counselor Alice?
So, I can actually shit somebody, and I just remembered to head the nearest report here. So, first thing to touch on that, that forty thousand, we were not told the full truth about what that forty thousand was for to begin with. In fact, that forty thousand was to be split in half, and twenty thousand was to go to one individual, and twenty thousand to another individual, and that's what it was for. And this was people currently working for us, who are already pulling a salary, he wanted to give them extra money, to do the same jobs that they were currently doing. That's what that forty thousand was for. So, right off the bat, had I known that, I would have made this argument then, that it was inappropriate. And in fact, I believe that the, one of the unions turned it down, but I'm not sure that that's true. But I will say, I will say that there is twenty-five thousand thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents left in that line, after all of the encumbrances for the year.
Counselor Gilmore, then Counselor Stempel?
Yeah, I think, I think that my question was misinterpreted. So, I understand why you chose twenty thousand dollars to be cut from one area. I don't understand how cutting this by twenty thousand, we're still not going to be up to speed with our, with our bills, if we remove that twenty thousand. And also, I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we can cut from the mayor's budget here and move that money around. I think we have to do that during the, during the regular budgeting process.
Counselor Stempel, Counselor Alice, and then Counselor Mass.
I just, I just urge counselors to have discussion based on fact. We bring in a lot of hearsay, I don't even know where this information's coming from, roots back to President Renault's statement about, "These are all things that we need to figure out, not on the floor right now." We can't like, "Oh, and then I heard that this person said this." That's why we're here so late. We're bringing in nuanced stories that aren't fact. There's no evidence that they're fact, there's no proof that they're fact. Can we just please stick to the facts, and not, again, witch hunt? I'd like to call the question on this, because I don't think anyone's moving, and just get it over with.
Was I, was I after Counselor Stempel?
Right. And Counselor Mass, and then...
I could, if I had known I needed to ask these questions when we had the folks at the table, I would have asked the questions, because they're not rumor, they are fact, and I could have the answers to those questions, and we would know exactly that what I was saying was true. That what this money was for was, in fact, for two individuals, twenty thousand dollars each. So, it's not nuanced, and it's not rumor, it is a fact, and it's up to the chair whether we want to hear that, and get that on the record from anyone else too.
I'm sorry, Counselor Alice, it's a time when I always stepped out, like, I don't know what, could you repeat?
I made a statement about the forty thousand dollars in the economic development budget that we added for the mayor to use for an economic development director, and I stated that we were not told the truth about what that money was for, it was actually to be split two ways, twenty thousand dollars each for two people who already hold positions and already work for the town. And the compromise that Counselor Mass was, was making was to reduce by twenty thousand to say, "Look, take the twenty thousand out of that department, and, and backfill this mistake that was made." Because clearly, it hasn't been spent, it hasn't been encumbered, and the encumbrances, mind you, run through the whole year. So, if anyone who's working for us, who's working for us for the whole year, gets encumbered their entire salary. So, it's not like we're going to be taking someone's salary who's already, who's already, you know, working for us. The part that I was not completely sure about was whether the union that one of the employees was in denied the town from giving her the extra money or not. That's the part that I don't know about, but we could certainly ask the question, and I can guarantee we'll get an answer, if we want to go with that rule. It's not, it's not something that is not fact, it is factual information. So, that's, that was what transpired, and I think that this, this measure of, of at least putting some accountability, because I can tell you, if we don't do something to hold the executive accountable for making bad decisions that cost taxpayers six hundred thousand dollars, all of this money is money that could be used for something else, like a skate park, like a library, like a public safety complex or firehouse, or simply upgrading the numerous number of buildings that need handicap accessibility upgrades. We had someone at, at Community Relations who brought us the four-hundred-page accessibility study that outlined every single building that needed accessibility upgrades, and this is all money that could be used for any number of those things. But what are we doing here tonight? We're spending it on interest, because we chose not to bond for what I believe was to, to make our debt picture look better to people, so that we could spend more money. I think that's what happened. So, I really, I think that this at least puts some tiny level of accountability on the executive for the terrible, terrible decision that he made.
Can you answer the original question that was put, put out?
I'm sorry, Counselor Mass, I was pointing to Counselor Gilmore.
I apologize, I thought I was being recognized, I was told I was after Counselor Alice.
Actually, I might need an answer anyways. So, I had asked, what was the rationale of twenty thousand dollars, and so we heard about asking the executive to fund this from his own department, so that it would be, you know, a punishment to him, except my concern is that the bill would be twenty thousand dollars short. That's, that was why, that was the actual question I was getting at, is how do we make up that extra twenty thousand? And what I'm seeing here is that we took twenty thousand out of, or what's proposed is twenty thousand out of central services, ten thousand out of cemeteries, twenty-five thousand out of veterans' benefits, and twenty thousand out of unemployment. If he's going to cut twenty-five thousands out of, twenty-five thousand out of veterans' benefits, I don't think he's going to cut it out of his own salary. I think he's going to pull it out of some other place that I don't want to see. I know that our budgets are already, I'm sorry, I can't speak properly, I'm really tired. I know that all of our departments are already running on a shoestring budget, so to see these cuts here, he's not, I don't think he's going to take it out of his own budget.
Counselor Mass.
Thank you, I apologize for speaking out of turn.
I do want to answer the questions Counselor Gilmore asked. You're absolutely correct, we can't independently add a line item here saying $20,000 from the office of the mayor. These appropriations have to come upon recommendation of the mayor. But we can tell them what we want and we can tell the people what we think is appropriate. Would we be $20,000 short? And that is a legitimate question because you don't want to appropriate all this money and be $20,000 short and still the tax bills don't go out on time. You can do an interdepartmental transfer within the department and just years of experience dating back to 1998 lead me to believe that there's $20,000 of wiggle room within what is one of the most difficult areas of the budget. There was always a lot of padding in that department because we never really know what the figures are actually going to come in at. We always try to conservatively overestimate within the department. So, I think there's $20,000 within there. If not, the mayor could certainly call for a special meeting and ask for the $20,000, within 48 hours' notice, and bring us back here to put $20,000 in from his budget. And you heard the one fact that we can dispositively say today is there's $25,000 that's unencumbered within his budget. It's really hard to say what the other facts are when we are regularly lied to.
Counselor Gilmore?
So, when you said that within 48 hours he could call us in for another emergency meeting, I have to say that as much as I love serving the town of Greenfield and I'm really happy that my precincts elected me, I was not expecting to go in for, I think we've had five emergency meetings and I've served for less than a year, so I don't think I want to do that again. And I think that we've already made it very clear that we are not happy, I think we all agree that we are not happy with the way that the mayor has withheld information from us and the way that there have been mistakes month after month after month. And I'm not saying that we vote for this because we're happy with the mayor. I'm saying we vote for this because we need to fix it. And I think the mayor knows, if he's watching at home, even if he's not watching at home, I think he knows we're not happy with this. We haven't been in a long time and I think that we still need to support this and that the two don't have to be related to each other.
Counselor Leonovich?
Being on the council for the last three years, it's remarkable how many times we've been put up against the wall. I mean, we're at situations consistently where it's either we do this or something bad will happen. And I think that as a compromise, this $20,000 can be found someplace else, can be moved around, but we have to send some kind of a message. It is consistently the same thing. We always get to this point and then we move forward and nothing is learned and we're the ones sitting here until midnight suffering through this, when there has to be some accountability. There just must be. There can, you cannot manage a town, a business, anything with this much crisis all the time. There has to be better planning, better foresight, and if it's not there, I don't know what else we can do. This at least sends a modicum, a small smidgen of a message, and I really hope that we can do that. Let him find it someplace else. I would prefer not to come back for a special meeting either, but there has to be someplace else to get this money from and it's just at least a slight, small message that we can send. And I think the budget can still be finalized with it.
Counselor Alice?
Yep. Very well said. This allows him to do the right thing. It allows him to take the $20,000 out of that old line item, which is 010012505111. That's where I want to see the $20,000 come from. It's there, it's not spent, no one is waiting on that money, no one is, has that money earmarked for them, that money is there. The money is there because we weren't told the truth to begin with. So, that's where I'm saying that money should come from and that's where, if we make this $20,000 cut, the mayor can do the right thing and take it from there and balance the budget to send the tax bills out on time. It's very simple. This is a small level of accountability that we can put onto the executive and he can do the right thing. And this, tax bills will go out and everything will happen. So, I think it's a good compromise and I think everyone should consider it very seriously.
Okay, so, right now, the amendment is still on the floor and I think we're getting ready to vote on that. So, it's on the, it's on cutting the $20,000 from that initial figure from general stabilization. So, it'd be 344, 850, correct? Yes. So, we ready to vote on that for, okay, good. Let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Lobach?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Leonovich?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Counselor, sorry, Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Stempel?
No.
So, the motion as amended passes, so now we're going to be voting, I mean, the amendment passes. So, now we're going to be voting on the motion as amended, which just to, which is minus the $20,000. So, it would be the sum of $4,019,850 be transferred from the following accounts to offset a deficit in the temporary interest account in the FY '19 operating budget and that $20,000 would come from the stabilization that was just cut. So, is everybody clear? And it requires nine votes to do this? So, we're going to do another roll call vote.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Lobach?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Leonovich?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel.
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Town Council adopt a minimum residential factor of one, resulting in an equal tax rate for all classes of property for the fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Second.
Report from committee?
Positive, unanimous.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Vice President Ricketts, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, motion, call the question.
Well, I don't think there's any discussion, so, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, motion carries. Counselor Stempel.
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Town Council votes that no residential exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Second.
Positive, unanimous recommendation. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, motion carries. Counselor Stempel.
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Town Council votes that no small commercial exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Report from committee?
Positive, unanimous.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, motion carries. Winter parking regulations. Vice President Ricketts?
Oh, we have to sign this. Do it at the end of the meeting. We have to sign this before we...
Okay.
Do a break, read it. Do you want a break to read it?
It's so long here.
Why don't we just say as written in the packet?
38, right?
Yeah. Why don't you say as written in the packet?
Okay. Moves that it be ordered as written in the packet.
Second.
For clarification, Counselor Ricketts, is your motion to amend the winter parking
regulations as written in the packet at pages 38 through 45?
Yes. These are the lines that Counselor Wheeler wrote. Yes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. What was the report from committee?
Yes, so, we were all in favor of this and I just have to, I wish you would dare applaud Counselor Wheeler who started this last summer, but not only did he put this forward, but he met with the Parking Commission and the Police Chief before it even came to committee. So, then we weren't running around doing all this stuff afterwards. So, I appreciate all that work done beforehand on his part.
Okay, are there any questions or discussions? Counselor Sun?
From what I understood, it was odd number of sides of the streets that it would be beyond Parktown.
Okay.
Instead of north and south, it'd be odd numbers.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, okay, I guess we're just going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, motion carries. On to page 45, oh, 46.
It's 45.
45.
The full search on the agenda.
I've got the motion.
May I leave?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're skipping 46.
Nope, we, to amend the Council rules and procedure, page 46. This is an annual one.
No, that's not it. Okay. Okay, so...
45.
44. 45?
Yeah.
Moves that it be ordered as stated in the packet.
Second. For clarification for the record, Counselor Ricketts, am I clear that your motion is to amend the rules of procedure of the Greenfield Town Council as written in the packet on page 44?
44, yep. I'll read it. Moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council vote to amend the Town Council rules of procedure to 61-2 Rule 2 meetings by deleting Greenfield High School, 21 Bar Avenue, and insert in its place John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street?
Second.
Report from committee?
Even decide at the end of this. We were for this, we just, we just needed to get some pricing still, but we were, the majority was for this. I don't know for people who weren't there or knew that what we're getting pricing on is that not only could we do remote participation from John Zahn, but every place. And John Zahn Center could be set up for us. The only thing that we're waiting for is the mayor's putting some people in place to be able to lock up after us and clean up after us, so it's not our job at all. Nope. Point to you at the speaker.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I, we moved to the high school and that had its challenges. We have two buildings and this goes back to last night's CRE meeting where we talked about, thanks to Jeanie Disorder who came in to share that 460-page accessibility study about what buildings are accessible. And we've touched on it at committee chairs. The Community Center and the high school are the only two buildings that are fully accessible to folks who have mobility issues. And our meetings, as was evidenced very clearly tonight, need to be in one of those two buildings. And frankly, I'm tired of how difficult it is to use community buildings that were built for the community to use during the evenings for meetings. And I don't care what it takes to use that building and also the high school building because that was a challenge as well and I believe still can be for groups to use. But what does it take for us to make sure that our meetings are at one of the two buildings that's completely accessible to rebuild? Someone could have been killed tonight. I mean, that's the reality of what happened this evening. Somebody could have died tonight because we're meeting in a location that was the only one that we could get, when what's going on at the Community Center tonight? Just curious, does anybody know?
I think there's a veterans group meeting.
Is there? There was no other room we could use. I mean, I'm just saying, there has, what's going on at the high school tonight? I don't know. And those are rhetorical questions, but there's got to be someplace we could have found to meet in one of those two buildings. It just has to be. So, I think we should pass this and I don't, I think while I'm all about spending and what we spend, somebody's life or ability to continue their life as it is is nothing compared to us being in a place that they can attend our meetings. It's not only our legal right, but it's our obligation, our moral obligation to make it happen. So, we need to make it happen. And, you know, I don't believe it's going to cost a lot of money to make it happen, but what it does cost to make it happen, we need to make it happen.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yeah, I do think we have to keep both buildings wide open because we do know that in the future, we're going to have many people at some meetings. And I do know at the John Zahn Center this summer, we had the public hearing there, people parked all over the lawn there. And so, I think when it's going to be a big group, that high school is going to be the better choice because there's actual parking spots, if that's what it takes for people to know, like, that's where your car belongs. But it was just a brand new building, so that really stood out for me, that people felt like it was okay that it was a packed place, so they were going to just park on the lawn.
Counselor Sun?
I think that, you know, those two buildings should be the only buildings that Town Council meets, you know, as full concert, whether it's special meetings or, you know, special call meetings or anything. And I think we should let Jeanie come in and talk to us about what we talked about last night, the buildings that are handicap accessible and those, you know, the grades they're on. Because it's good to, not only for public to know, but everybody on Town Council to know about. So, the meetings will be held at the right place at the right time for disabled people as well as those that aren't. Because like what happened tonight could happen somewhere, sometime down the road if we don't hold our meetings someplace where handicapped people can get in and out of. And then the town will be in trouble, not each individual.
Counselor Mass?
Community Relations and Education took up this matter. We had a unanimous positive recommendation after considering all the facts. We also learned at appointments and ordinances that live broadcast is now available from the John Zahn Community Center, which is good news. They certainly are both accessible buildings. There are a few more accessible buildings we've had community meetings at. The Community Relations and Education Committee has met at a different community meeting space each and every month this year, lots of community meeting space in this community. At CRE, when we met at CRE, Clark was able to get the key, I was able to get his chair, there was no issues locking up, no staff required. It's a little different than the high school. The high school requires by contract a janitor to be on duty, not an issue for about nine months out of the year, except for when we go to midnight. But in the summer months, it's an issue as well as the HVAC is an issue. But I just want to thank those janitors over the last year who have given us their time at the high school, even though they're paid, and recognize Jean, those of you who know Jean, has been a 30-year custodian and janitor at the Greenfield High School and is retiring this week. A janitor who has worked for 30 years in one building is almost unheard of these days and I just want to congratulate him.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yeah, and I do want to agree with Counselor Mass that... Yeah, and I do want to agree with Councilor Mass that there are more buildings that are handicap accessible. I'm glad that Jeanne had gone to CRE. I don't think it should be a full council, but anything she could forward to us so that we all have it, that would be good, but more importantly, to the town clerk's office because, you know, they're the ones who book all of our meetings and stuff. But like tonight's scoop that came in and already gave us kind of a heads-up that the next forum's going to be 100 to 200 people or whatever, then I really think we need to look at the auditorium in the middle school, the high school. As much as I despise sitting on a stage and looking down at people, that's going to be the best place, I think, to have that many people. Even our high school's not going to cut it, and definitely John Zahn Center is not going to cut it at all for that library forum meeting. So, the bigger, the better, even if it has to be the GCC CAF, which I'm really not hugely in favor of at night for some people to have to go through that parking lot to, to get in. For many of us, we're fine, we're younger and stuff, but, you know, it would be a problem to some. So, but there are many, so I just don't want people to think that what tonight was serious and stuff, but to think after all these years, council has held meetings in other places and successfully here for years too. And I do want to thank GCTV. Tonight was unfortunate, but, but please, many years upon years have gone on here with huge amount of audience participation at the same time. But yes, it was unfortunate.
Okay, so, the motion on the floor, everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Councilor Mass?
I move that the lease of the Greenfield Minor League be approved for a term of 30 years in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B.
Second.
Report from committee?
Community Relations had met with the Greenfield Minor League. We had unanimous positive recommendation to approve with one amendment, and that would be to amend from 30 years to 99 years. I think the committee, as well as Greenfield Minor League, thought there was absolutely new reason they should have to come back in 30 years, and I think it just wasn't considered doing a longer-term lease. So, I would move to amend to 90, 99 years.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, that passes, and now, so we're voting on the motion as amended, which would be to, for the Greenfield Minor League to be approved for a term of 99 years. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, so, any presentation of petitions and similar papers? Report of committees? Councilor Mass?
Just a quick report, Community Relations and Education will not meet in the month of December due to the holidays.
Um, unfinished business? Old business? New business? There's the first, we know the situation. Um, motions for reconsideration, and a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Meeting has been adjourned.
I have paperwork that you could all sign right now, that way I don't have to ask you. You can use your own letter.
Pictures left.
I will take down this.
Small hair.